October 11th, Board of Trustees meeting at the Village of Merritt. I need a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tonight, we have a special report from both the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Environmental Conservation of New York State. And with us, sitting down below is Bethany McLennahan and Said. Bethany is from the Army Corps of Engineers. She's been working on this project for a while. And we have Said Alom. Said is from the Department of Environmental Conservation of New York State, and he is here to help us tonight. And what we're going to get is just an update. I know there's not a lot to report, but an update on where we are with the plan, and ask a few questions, and continue on. We're joined now by our village attorney. So Bethany, would you like to start? It would probably work better if you go today as yet.
Hi, good evening. Just a reader, and Bethany McLennahan, I'm the project manager for the Merrinick Sheldon Lake Sheldon Rivers Flood Risk Management Reduction Project. So I'm here just to give you guys an update on where we at. So we are currently in the design of the removal of the Ward Avenue Bridge. That is projected to take us through June of 2023. And then, from there, we're working with the New York State on the local sponsor to do the project partnership agreement to release that $88 million in funding so we can continue the project and go into further design and construction. So that's...
The only design work you're doing now is the removal of the bridge, not the replacement of the bridge?
Correct. Due to the preliminary engineering and design funding that we have right now, we can only do the removal, but we're not going to be letting a contract out until we have the replacement design as well. And that will take place right after the removal. And once that project partnership agreement has been signed.
Continue on. Why don't we try and save our questions to... She's finished her presentation.
That's it. That's where we are.
Your soul of brevity.
Short and sweet, to the point.
Dan, you have more questions?
Is it anticipated... At the public meeting, there was discussion about the cost-benefit ratios and tweaks. Are you undertaking a cost-benefit...
Yes, we're currently doing that now as well.
...in the evaluation of various aspects of the project?
Yes, we're updating the current costs as well during this phase, and we're actually going to be starting the H&amp;H work as well to update that with the due fire flows and everything.
You have a timeline for the cost-benefit ratio update?
Probably about March.
Nor?
Nope, not yet. Not yet.
Bethany, is it possible to ask the federal elected officials to add another Army Corps team to work on Phase Two while your team is working on Phase One of the project?
There's no funding. So this is... What do you mean by Phase Two?
Well, you're working on Phase One, right? The Ward Avenue Bridge?
Yeah, we designated that as Phase One, yeah.
Okay. So in parallel to that, could somebody be designing Phase Two?
Well, once we do the project partnership agreement and that release of funding, we'll have more teams on to design and do the construction.
So once that's...
Once that's released, yes.
So that is... It's a possibility in the future to have...
Correct.
To be planning multiple phases at the same time?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That's my main concern.
I have a follow-up to that one.
Go ahead.
So Ken, is there anything we can do to help facilitate the partnership agreement with the state, or is it just a matter of working through the process?
It's just working through this process and you guys working with Westchester County and the New York State DEC to work on that agreement.
And Schumer's office has been very...
Are there any hiccups or problems in that that we can facilitate?
We can't talk over each other, and I was still talking.
Stop talking.
Okay. So it's important for the people who are interpreting at home. And I know that Schumer's office is still involved in that agreement, is that correct?
As far as I know, yes. We are... We're not involved in that local sponsor agreement, just because we, you know, whoever is designated the local sponsor, we will work with, you know, whether it be DEC or Westchester County, that's who we work with. And then there's the project partners, which is the Village of Merrinick and so forth. So...
Dan?
Are there any hiccup sort of things that we can do to help facilitate the partnership agreement, either from your vantage point, or Said's vantage point, or the county's vantage point, or the village's vantage?
I'll let Said talk about that, I guess, when I'm done.
Well, you know, the... Lou?
The timeframe, I mean, you're working on removal, planning for the removal of the Ward Avenue Bridge, which will happen, you guess, when, or you estimate when?
The 90% plans and specs will be done by June. So in that timeframe between January and June, we'll be working with the local sponsor to get that project partnership agreement, so it's a seamless transition from one phase to the next phase.
So in the next year, the only thing that will be happening is the removal of the bridge?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. That's probably a good deal slower than a lot of people are comfortable with.
What is... Just to give folks some perspective, because folks are understandably anxious and have a small store of patience. And I understand that, but I also understand that there's a process, and the process has to play out. What is normal for a process like this? Is this... We on a normal path, or are we on a fast path?
We're on a normal path.
Is there a way to get on a fast path?
Once we can get that project partnership agreement, we can move it to a faster path because we'll have the funding available to implement additional designers and construction. So right now, we're limited with the funding we have and moving forward with that.
This board has determined to dredge the rivers and deepen them to try and complement the project.
In areas where you're not?
Where areas where you're not. They're, you know, we view it with a certain amount of urgency. I would like... We'd like to know how you view it. Is that something that we should be doing?
Yes, to remove the debris and everything else and the excess sedimentation that's in the river, because it's not tidally influenced up here, yes, to hold more capacity. And then, once you have that information, we'll work with you guys to get the surveys and update our surveys to put into our modeling, so we can capture everything that's been going on.
So our dredging will affect your modeling?
Yes.
That's good to know. So would that possibly lower the cost-benefit ratio?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Okay. Mr. Said, do you have updates first?
Nothing much.
Microphone.
Why don't you go to the microphone, please?
That's pretty much the update from me also. My... I think my understanding is the next step is PPA, Project Partnership Agreement, between our... We don't know who the local sponsor is. So once we have the local sponsor and we have the funding secured, then we'll go with the PPA.
Okay. So we'll have to tie up that loose end rapidly, on our part?
Second.
To move that process forward.
Right.
Okay. All right. Are... Unless... Does anybody else on the board want to ask right now?
I may have a couple left, but let me finish.
Okay. Tony Gelber is representing the Flood Committee, and he's going to ask a few questions. I'm not sure if you're going to be able to answer them all right here, but if you can't answer it here, could you just then...
So, good evening. I'm Tony Gelber, Chair of the Flood Committee. I'd like to thank the mayor and the board for allowing us to participate in this, and welcome Bethany and Said, and that's how you say it, or if not, I apologize. And I want to thank the Flood Committee for all the hard work they've done. So we were told we had four questions. So we have four questions. We had quite a debate in our committee of whether they should be detailed or short, and the detailed didn't win. At any rate, so some of them do have more than one part, though. So we have four questions and then a clarification, right? This is where we got under the wire there. So we... The village had sent you, partly at our request, a request to tweak the project, right? And we had three tweaks. One was to put an open channel flow under the parking lot. The second was to either raise more homes in Harbor Heights and/or work with some channel modifications up there. And the third was to really change the flow through Columbus Park, either through the bridges or the directions, something like that. We did get a response, or I could say the village got a response. It was rather long and complicated, and so our question is twofold. One, can you put that in plain English for us, simple terms? And then the second is, and I think the board just alluded to this, we would really like to start at least two parts of that, like ASAP. We think that that open covert across the parking lot, even if it got started, you call it an overflow in your project, I think, and I think that would really help with flooding in the short term. And as the board just pointed out, if nothing's going to happen due to just the process, if we could get that going...
Let it open a little bit.
If we could get that going, I think we would see some flood relief, right? The other part is that the people in Harbor Heights, you know, I know you're probably going to have to wait for the H&amp;H study to do that, but is there a way for us to get some relief up there? And, you know, we've been talking about the road to nowhere forever, and, you know, Harrison is afraid, I think, to do stuff because they're afraid if they take stuff out, it's going to flood people who've never been flooded. At any rate, so a simple answer to the tweaks, and can we do this stuff ASAP? Okay? Okay. All right. Number two, I may have to put my glasses on at some point here. After the H&amp;H study, and this is really, I kind of covered this, can you work with us on maximizing solutions for both Harbor Heights and Columbus Park, okay? Three, and we did speak about this, I think, with you at some point, I think on May 18th, Mallow, you took time, you know, when you were here. So the question is kind of twofold. Can the project monies be moved from one part of the project to another? For example, I think the county and the state, and I'm not sure who is helping fund the Waverly Avenue Bridge, so can we move that money to another part of the project, for example, Harbor Heights or the open channel? And the second is more detailed on that, really. So, you know, four parts, like the open channel, maybe we want to make it, we're calling it a grassy channel. In Harbor Heights, you know, people don't have the money to raise their homes. So, you know, can we kind of fund some of that money to help them with the permits, the fees, maybe some structural stuff? So it's a whole money question. On a big pot, can we move big pots around, then can we support little pots? Okay. The fourth is on communications with the Army Corps. And I'm going to quote your answers, hopefully correctly. So in the May 18th questions, the FMAC asked whether we could meet with you on a fairly regular basis, and I think your answer in writing was, "We would love to meet FMAC." So the question is, can FMAC meet with the Corps, either in person or in Zoom, on some type of regular basis so we could communicate? Okay? The clarification. So we heard you talk about the H&amp;H study during the May 18th meeting, and again a bit tonight. So I guess I tend to be a person that jumps, and my boss even tells me sometimes, Tony, stop jumping to help people. I thought you would be down here May 19th with your engineer doing the H&amp;H study. That hasn't happened, so we're wondering, like, when is it going to happen? Are you going to do all areas of the village? How detailed is it going to be? How is it going to inform the process? And, you know, who's going to know about it? So how does that whole process work? So that's our H&amp;H question. So that's our 4.5 questions.
Bethany, is there anything in those questions that you could address tonight?
Thank you, Bethany, and Said.
Tony? Would you open that door a little bit? The door has to remain a little bit open because there's closed doorway locks, then other people can't get in.
Okay. So to address the first question about tweaking the project, yes, we can tweak the project, and as we get into the design, we will work into those tweaks, you know, whether it be a closed channel flow, open channel flow, what type of bottom, grassy bottom, gravel bottom, you know, so those things will be worked out in the design in coordination with the Flood Control Committee and with the mayor and with the board. We would like to start the projects as soon as possible. We're just in a holding pattern at the moment until we get this PED phase, the Ward Avenue Bridge, completed, and then releasing of that project partnership agreement. So once we get that project partnership agreement, we can move faster on the other aspects of the project. And then, for relief in the Harbor Heights area, that'll come out when we revise the H&amp;H study. I don't have an answer for that at the moment of how many additional houses, less houses, or what else we can do up there until we actually get that modeling completed. So I don't have an answer for that at this moment. And same with Columbus Park with all those H&amp;H solutions. So that will come out within the next year or two. So project monies moving from one part of the project to another, that's something we have to determine when we determine this project partnership agreement and work through our regulations as well within the Army Corps, just because right now it specifically states Waverly Avenue Bridge. We all know that the village is currently working on that, so that's something we're going to be working...
Working with the town.
The town, sorry. Working within our agency to revise that. And communications, yes. Now that we have the design actually moving forward, we could set up maybe regular monthly meetings with everybody. You know, we could do it Zoom, and then maybe every once in a while, we could come meet in person. So I was kind of waiting for that design to actually start so we actually can talk about something. And now that it's actually started, we can actually talk and move forward from there. So we did have engineers come out to look at the Ward Avenue Bridge. They came up and took pictures and, you know, some minor measurements and stuff like that. But when we do the H&amp;H study, we're going to have a full-blown survey done. So that's when we'll coordinate with Jerry and the town, the town engineer.
What kind of survey? I didn't understand.
A typographical...
Oh, I didn't hear.
...survey, so to update our current model. So that's why you haven't really seen any, but people have been up here to look at the area in general and then the Ward Avenue Bridge.
Okay. When you get back, you know, the questions that you couldn't answer tonight for Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee?
I can work with Tony on...
Yeah. And just, so that...
Okay.
Those...
Yeah, I'll relook at that letter and see if I can make it into more common language. I know that's an issue sometimes, so...
You know, the answers and the questions that... The questions from the Flood Mitigation Advisory Committee, and the answers that you give them will then inform the decisions that the Board of Trustees ultimately makes about where the project goes.
Okay.
So that, you know, advisory tests and, you know, their pertinent questions will then hopefully help this board or future boards make decisions.
Sounds good.
All right. Said?
Anything there? I'm glad you came.
May I ask about our permits, our dredging permits? Where are we with that?
I can follow up and get a response to the board tomorrow.
Those are DE... DEC or?
No, Army Corps.
Army Corps.
Yeah.
Bethany, you know anything about that?
Can we generate a sense of urgency on those permits?
I reached out to our permitting folks, and they were supposed to come back as well. I'll follow up.
Yeah, I mean, just tell them that, you know, we've declared an emergency, we've allocated the money, we're ready to go, we're waiting on paperwork. And the folks who live here have a certain amount of anxiety every time it rains, and I don't think... I don't think we should be waiting around it. You know, I...
I don't work with that permits on that project, but we did reach out to Alexandra on the permitting. The last I spoke to her, which was two weeks ago, she did not have the permits. They weren't sent, so the town was supposed to talk to their engineers to see if they sent them. I have not heard an update from that.
But, I mean...
So she's anticipating them, and once she gets them, she'll work on them.
You concur that it is a matter of a certain amount of urgency.
It is urgent, yes, but we don't have the permits in hand, so we can't do anything about it.
I mean, maybe we could just underline it to them that this is not just a normal request, this is... It's going to flood again.
Well, once we get the permits, we can fast-track it through, but we just haven't received them yet, so...
Were you looking to say something?
Do you mean the permit applications?
Correct.
Okay. So...
So we'll follow up. Okay.
If I may, as a liaison to the Flood Committee, a couple of things to amplify, I think, with the abbreviated questions. There was discussion about the open covert and maybe making that more than just a... An additional flow, not for an overflow, but making it the main flow, i.e., moving the river.
No.
Because, I guess, this was, you know, what you're looking at, that was part of their thought process. Also, there was a long list of questions that FEMA had sent to the Corps on multiple occasions and still has not had answers to those. So at some point in time, if that can be answered, it would be helpful. I don't know...
I have answered everything that has come my way.
And it was given to...
It was given to the town engineer, my counterpart. So I have answered everything.
They've been... All of them, because the committee has not received them.
Tony, didn't you get the answers from Army Corps?
We got one set of answers from the... Not all that I said. There was a previous email.
Microphone. Microphone. Microphone.
Microphone. He needs a microphone.
You need the microphone.
You need a microphone, Tony.
Tony.
The set that I sent you, you definitely got the answers now within the published questions. Were the previous emails, I think? Eddie had sent originally, Eddie had previously, yeah, and then I think I may have sent it again. So we didn't see the answers to those. I'm not saying you didn't send them. So should I resend those to you?
Resend the questions, and I'll take a look because they might have been in that revised, that letter I sent you. I might have combined them, but I know I have responded to all the questions that were sent, so...
Were the questions duplicative? Were the questions duplicative?
Some of them were, yeah, but it was, you know, it was like a different set of questions.
Okay.
Okay. I'll take a look.
Also, if I may, is the part... Does each... There were four phases, I think, for the project. Does each phase have to have a partnership agreement, or is the partnership agreement going to cover all of them?
The partnership agreement will cover all of them. It covers the remaining project. So we just broke it out for construction contracts and design contracts.
Said, I actually do have a question for you. You know, you want to get... You know, the governor recently announced $3 billion in funding to build resiliency and climate mitigation change. Will we have access to that money for separate mitigation projects upriver in areas not covered by the Army Corps, like the reservoir and places, you know, the dam and stuff like that?
I can take this question to our executive, but I think my understanding is we are expecting some money, bond act money, right? You're talking about the bond act money?
Yes.
Yeah, we're expecting some money. Next year, we'll see how much we get, and then the executive will find out how much we can utilize for this project. I have...
I'm not just talking about this project. I'm talking about using our money for stuff not covered by this project.
So...
I think the mayor is asking, the dam and the reservoir and upstream are not part of the Army Corps project.
Okay.
They're not part of the project area, they're not part of anything that's being included at this point in time. So I think the mayor is asking, you know, if there's money available from the state, would these types of projects, you know, the dam rehabilitation, which I know you're intimately familiar with, the reservoir, which I know that you've had handed, and upstream, you know, in terms of the flows, whether these types of things could be covered, and if so, what can be done to help expedite that?
I think that's really what you're asking. That's the long form. Yeah, that's a long-form question, yes.
So the question is if we can use...
If we could use this...
Some of the money.
This $3 billion for projects exclusive of the Army Corps, dredging the reservoir, what used to be the reservoir, and bridge rehabilitation...
Of the dam.
And just, you know, whatever we deem is a good project that, you know, the experts will tell us will give us flood mitigation outside of the Army Corps. Would that money be purpose for that?
Okay, so you're talking about the Merrinick Dam, the high-hazard dam, right? And the reservoir behind it?
Let's take it out of specific projects.
Any dam here, okay.
All right. Can we use... Can we get funding from that $3 billion pool for flood mitigation projects that aren't the Army Corps?
I don't know the answer, but I'll get back to you after I talk to the executive. I think when I was in the dam safety, they got some bond act money to do this kind of... But it has to be owned by the municipality, local government, not private dams. That was 1996 bond act money, but this time I don't have answers.
If you could find us out, but take the dam out of your head, and just, let's just go with projects to mitigate flooding.
Outside this project?
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe this might be... Would the money from the bond act go to the various state agencies, which we could apply for money through the consolidated funding application?
Second.
Would the bond act money be appropriated to the various state agencies that we can apply to under the consolidated funding application?
Okay. I'll get back to you. These two questions.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. So Bethany, the next... The next phase is to get the sponsorship settled, and... But you're still moving a pace at the design through Ward Avenue, removing the design of that area?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And once the funding gets ironed out, what's the timeline look like then? Now you have your money, the dam is open, does it work?
That's... I don't have a definitive schedule at the moment. That's something we'd be working on to see the availability, whether we're going to be using AE contractors as well, or a combination of both. So, you know, we're looking at probably two years for a design, and then, you know, Ward Avenue would be probably another year, well, not in addition, but within that year for construction. So we're working in parallel, be constructing and designing and constructing and designing at the same time.
Did you say two years for design?
For the remaining of the project, yes.
Okay.
Minus Ward Avenue, yeah, this is outside.
I understand. Anybody else on the board? Dan?
I just wanted to add, you know, the one element, you know, project component, which was the Waverly Avenue Bridge. I actually attended two meetings with the town today, and the question was asked at both of those meetings about the progress and the schedule for that. The town reported that they're looking to award a construction contract in probably January of next year. So while the components of what the Army Corps is working on may not be worked on, you know, next month or in the next, you know, several months, you will see a component of the project that they were going to do be constructed sooner rather than later.
You've also, you know, signed off on the Waverly Avenue Bridge from a flooding standpoint, right? Has the Army Corps reviewed that?
No. So I did ask that question, I think, might have been after the meeting that we had back in May. I approached, I asked the town and their engineer what the status was and whether they had spoken with the Corps. They told me that at the beginning of the design process, much like we did with Hillside Avenue, they did talk to the Corps. The Corps gave them the generic specifications for what they need to do. And when I last asked about this back in May, they said their engineer, they were going to go back to the Corps again where they are right now, but I don't know if that's...
I know they went to the Corps when I was there.
Yeah.
Talk about, you know, before '17.
Yeah. No, but it was definitely... It was on... It's on the town's radar. I can, you know, follow up with the town engineer. I can, you know, follow up with the town engineer, he's actually on vacation this week, but I can follow up with him next week to see if there's been any further checking with the Corps about the Waverly Avenue Bridge.
Okay.
At the public meeting that we had at the Emlin, that question was specifically asked and was answered by your panel, that they had already coordinated, had already sent information about and worked with, with the town, with the town, whoever the design engineer was on behalf of the town to do some modifications to make it better for.
I know they coordinated a while ago, so I don't know, I don't think anything recently has happened with that.
Yeah, so they, the last I asked was after the public meeting, because I think a question had come in from one of the residents and I had reached out to the town and their engineer and they said they were going to follow up with the Corps before they finalized everything to make sure that it was designed according to HOIL. That's maybe, that's not the best term, but they were going to make sure it met the Army Corps' objectives.
Okay. Bethany, would you be willing to come back in the beginning of the year?
Definitely, of course.
And, you know, it's exclusive of the flood, when you come, you know, that's fine, but just come back to the regular meeting here?
Yes.
In about, you know, the beginning of the year sometime?
Yes.
And we can talk about where we are, what we could do. Hopefully it'll be issues ironed out by then.
Of course.
I really appreciate both of you coming here tonight.
Thank you, appreciate being here. It's nice to see everybody.
Yeah, you're getting, you're getting, you're regular. You know, we, we have people who work for us who tend to move into the community.
It is a beautiful area.
It is, it is. And hopefully soon it won't flood.
Yes, hopefully it'll alleviate the flooding.
Thank you both. For those of you, many of you who have just come in, we've been talking to the Army Corps of Engineers and the New York Department of Environmental Conservation, who are very involved in helping us with the Army Corps plan. They were just giving us an update. The Flood Committee asked some questions, Board of Trustees asked some questions. They will be coming back in January. In January, maybe we'll have to have a venue that's larger and see if we, if it's appropriate, if we can answer questions from the public at the time. Okay? But they're going to be going. If you're here for that, this is the end of that. We're going to continue on with our work session. This was just a very brief where we are and in essence where we are is we're still in the design stage. And hopefully the design, they'll first be working on the Waverly, not the, I'm sorry, they'll first be working on the Ward Avenue Bridge, taking out the Ward Avenue Bridge. They work from the bottom, they work their way up. Can you just explain why that happens?
Yeah.
Use the mic.
So it's to reduce, so you don't exacerbate any flooding upstream. So if you took out the, say, the northernmost component or the upstreammost component, you know, you might exacerbate flooding downstream. So if you start from downstream up, it alleviates that.
And working downstream, if you believe you had a problem downstream, hopefully it'll get the water out of the community quicker.
Correct.
And help the upstream folks.
That's correct.
So that they're incremental benefits as you're working?
Yes.
And you don't have to wait for the whole project to be done because water will, as it gets lower.
Yeah, you'll see a little bit of a difference once the Ward Avenue Bridge is removed, you know? It's not going to totally cure the flooding, but you'll see a little bit of reduction. And then you'll, as you move upstream, you'll see that.
Just as an aside, were you involved in the Rockaway Beach program?
I am not, but I do know about it.
Okay, because, you know, I grew up going down there during the summers. And I'll tell you what the Corps did with the Broadwalk and how they improved the recreational facilities around it. It, and, and, you know, they built natural dunes that Rockaway never had. It's, it's really a vast improvement.
Thank you.
And when I go down there during the summer, I'm always like, I hope, I hope this is what we get in Village of Mamaroneck, you know? And because I remember when they replaced the Broadwalk, they didn't, they didn't put up a wooden Broadwalk, which Rockaway had for, you know, 120 years. And people were screaming, oh my God, is that going to be a wood Broadwalk? And so much better. It's just, you know.
Or splinters.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I don't know how many splinters my mother took out of my feet. Yeah. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
And go in peace. All right, we're going to continue on.
Thank you.
As our work session agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
You want this? Here. At the current rate they're going, at least they'll definitely be here for the next run. Yeah, I feel bad for them because it's, you know, it is what it is. Listen, I don't, I don't buy it. She's, she's not lying. She's not, but, you know, it's just that everybody accepts that it's going to be slow. We translated this one. This, this was simulcast in Spanish.
Oh, okay.
If you go to LMCTV tomorrow or the day after, you'll be able to access the simulcast in Spanish.
Oh, okay, guys.
Yeah. Is there, I'm sorry, what? It, it's going to be replaced.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Do you mean fix it or?
Fix it.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not going to be closed.
The town of, the town of Mamaroneck is.
The town of Mamaroneck is paying for that. Not the village, the town. Yeah.
Yeah, it's their.
Okay, thank you. There you go. Is, is the Washington Street?
I think it's, it's about to be finished, but then we got to move over to, was it Gertrude? It's a lot of work. Yeah, but I think we're almost over that.
Almost over. You know, we have to continue the meeting, I'm sorry.
Yeah, manager's office tomorrow, 777, 770. 770.
Works that we can't do it.
Yep, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Because they, we have to do the executive session inside if we do the executive session, right?
By disconnecting you, we're on their camera. Try doing it in here.
No, no, I don't want to, I don't.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Oh, I see what you mean. Okay, okay, so we can't.
They're using, going to kill their broadcast onto their LMCT channel 72.
Okay.
What's going on there? Everyone's running? Is it, do we need to, we have to make a move, a motion, right?
What, are we doing it now or at the end? We usually do it at seven.
You told me you wanted to do it?
No, 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 no. I, I just assumed that we would be doing it after this and it would be okay. I didn't understand what Augie said.
You want to do it after this?
No, no, I, I just meant that I didn't see.
Which would you rather?
I'll set it, it's fine. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, all right. Continuing on at breakneck pace. Review of Village Code to include requirements for fair and affordable housing for all zones. Is that, do we actually have backup for that?
Yeah, what we, yeah, we do. What we have is the model ordinance and I think that we should consider adopting the model ordinance to require a modicum, it's not a lot, of affordable housing for any project that's over five units throughout the village.
What do we have now? We have?
Well, we only have it in certain areas. So it's like not in the RM3, it was just, it's only for the areas that we included in the 2019 post moratorium law. And I think it should be, let's say, for instance, even in a single family zone, if some, something happens and five new units are built, a proportion would be affordable. So I think that that's.
You know, for developed, built by new houses.
Right. And we had talked about that in November of 2020, which seems like a long time ago because it was. And we were going to follow up with West Hab and I don't know if you did, but I did recently and, you know, West Hab, I talked to Andrew and Rich, and they both thought that this really was something that we should do. And since we are in the midst of adopting our comprehensive plan, I think this is, I think one way of starting is to ask it to be part of the comp plan, reviewed as part of the comp plan.
Can we do this? I mean, and I'm, I'm with you on this. Bob, can we draft a law from this? Can you review that?
Yes.
What are your opinions on that?
So obviously it's your choice what you want to do. What we'd need to do is integrate this with the existing AFFH provisions in the code. And my only question would be, to the extent that they're different, because my recollection is there was a lot of discussion about those provisions. Do you want to conform this to what's already in the code other than having to do with geography? Or do you want to conform what's in the code to this in terms of the first draft?
So, I mean, I, I think we spent a lot of time on what, what we came up with in 2019 and I would say that absent changing that, we would just use those as our guidelines. I'd love for it to be deeper, but there wasn't a consensus that we could get any traction with something that was more deeply affordable. But I think you raise a good issue that, you know, this is just a proposal from the county and we tweaked it to, like, we dealt with the recreation fund and so I think we've already kind of got a framework. I just would like to expand the framework throughout the community.
You may decide upon reviewing it that those tweaks that you made were because it was limited to a particular area and not village-wide. And you may want to go back to this, but I was just asking how you want to approach the problem.
For me, and I, I would like to approach it with the most liberality, to get as much affordable housing as we can out of the new code. You know, in way, you know, if there's ways that this model code, you know, gets us more affordable housing, I'd like to use that for that purpose.
So for discussion purposes, we can put together a draft that, much like we did the tree law.
Let's not do 21.
But please don't do 22 versions. That's the only thing I ask. We can put together a version that has what we see as the most liberal provision, if you will, in the draft and then, you know, a comment about what the other provision was. So you can then make a choice as you go through it. This is going to take a little bit longer, but we could do that.
Sure. And, and I mean liberal in the most generous sense, not in the, I could see, I could see the, you know, social media as well.
My, because I'm talking about being a liberal again, you can't stop it.
You mean liberal in the sense of maximizing?
Maximizing, yeah.
They're maximizing AFFH.
Flexible.
Yep.
All right, Nora, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think it's a step in the right direction.
Okay.
We will get that to you as soon as we can and we may not be able to do that for the next meeting.
I understand that.
We'll do it as soon as we can.
We've been talking about this since November 2020, so I appreciate the.
Well, I promise we'll get it to you before November 2024.
Thank you.
Well, good. That is very good. Tree Law, P L L D, Planning Board comments. I, I didn't see any major changes the planning board made that I would, you know, I, I don't know about absent human intervention, but what do you think about absent human intervention? Is that a term of law?
I think it's clear enough.
Okay.
It means not, it's not a, it's not a term of art, to be sure.
No, it's not.
But I think it's fair enough, it expresses the intent that no person did this.
Right.
Yes.
And I, and you're, the Tree Committee had had, you're still revising this, right?
We, we put in everything that the Tree Committee and the Planning Board wanted in substantively. I made some wording changes. We made wording changes to try to be more clear. But substantively, everything they wanted, we put in this draft so that you could see it and make a decision about whether you want it in the next draft of this law.
So the draft's not on the backup is the problem. The only draft, the only, the only law that we have is the markup from the Tree Committee. So we don't have your revisions yet.
No, no, you do. You have.
Yeah, we do.
No, there, there were no revisions that we would make other than what, we didn't have any substantive revisions of our own. We took what the Planning Board and the Tree Committee wanted to put in, modified the language somewhat to be more clear, but made no substantive changes to that and then put it in here.
But I think the, the problem is after, when we last discussed this, the Tree Committee had corresponded that it, there, what, what they had recommended didn't get captured.
I thought we had captured all of it based on the most recent correspondence, but maybe I was mistaken.
I think there's something after that. So I think we should, let's just check, maybe, so I, so they had, they had made comments after August. So I think that's the rub.
Okay, well, if you want to get those to me.
I'll go back through. I think there, there, there are emails that Beverly sent, I'll go, go back through.
What we can do, if the board is otherwise comfortable with this, plus whatever comments they might make.
Yeah.
The Tree Committee, initial comments, we could put the Tree Committee's comments in the next draft as a, and drafted as a proposed law, ready for you to schedule a hearing if you want.
On the 24th?
We're ready to be, ready on the 24th to schedule a hearing.
Okay, all right, let's.
And we can highlight what those other changes are and you could decide whether you want them or not.
Okay.
Okay. I think that that's a.
Thank you.
If we could get this done by the end of the year.
Yeah.
And we can work on the third revision?
I think that I shall never see.
I still have a concern that there's nothing in it that requires the village to act on a permit application.
It's a provision that requires the building inspector to act.
Say again?
There's a provision requiring the building, building inspector to act when it's the building inspector's determination. I believe it's within 21 days.
Yeah. It is.
If the board wants us to put in something further for the other boards, we can do that.
No, we, we had this discussion and it wasn't consensus, but it was revising it.
I think there was some discussion that if, if it didn't, if, if there wasn't a determination within 21 days and then the permit was automatically granted and that there's too much room for error there.
Yeah. You understand?
I think Bob raised a point.
You were smart back then.
I mean, I'm concerned you put yourselves, you put some of the boards or the board or the.
Yeah, under a time.
Yeah. No matter what else is going on.
Right.
If you do that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Proposed wetlands amendment, we've never heard back from HZMC.
I think they were discussing it at their last meeting, so.
Okay, we haven't heard back. Just, I, I see it's to be held, but what's going on with Lizwick, anything?
We're trying to set the next meeting. One of the staff members from legislator Parker's office is working on that. I just included a copy of that email saying he's trying to set the next meeting.
Now, Chuck Strom had always been the chair, right?
Ever since Phyllis stepped down. Unfortunately, she passed away, but yeah. Chuck's been the chair of Lizwick for many.
Since 2013 then, yeah. Okay, so Lizwick's going to need a chair.
Yes, they are.
That understands how this works and that understands the problems of the Village of Mamaroneck. So I'm going to talk to our sister communities about getting a good chair for Lizwick, something that a young man could put on his resume someday. And I think you'd be excellent at it, Dan.
Thank you.
Nobody has as much knowledge as this, as you. Absent Phyllis and who's, you know.
Not with us anymore.
Not with us anymore. If, if, you know, you could, if, if you decide tomorrow, Mayor, please, that's crazy, I can't do it, you know, we'll talk about it offline, but I think you'd be great at it. And it never helps.
I do too, if you think you want to do it.
I was hoping that I could have been the fir, the executive director of the Regional Stormwater Management District we tried to set up many, many, many years ago, but.
Well, this is, this is your foot in the door, pal. So we have that. And when, when you have more information, just let us know. Why don't we just remove it until you have the more information? Lowering village-wide speed limit to 25 miles per hour. So Mark.
Tom, before you just remove it, we'd ask, Bob had concerns about the agreement and.
Right, but they're, they're working on a new agreement. There's nothing for Bob to look at.
Just to be clear, I'm not working on a new agreement.
We're going to get suggestions to, to, you know, for people who, from Bob, that we can give to them to work on.
They haven't informed the committee yet. It's a nonentity now. It's a nonentity now. This is just a committee that once existed, that now doesn't exist anymore, and we're trying to reform it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's best to wait for something to be developed for us to respond to.
Yes.
So, yeah, let's keep the number of chefs in the kitchen pretty limited right now.
Okay. 20, lowering village-wide speed limit to 25 miles per hour. For folks who are watching, just for folks who are watching, Governor Hopel and the New York State Legislature passed a law that allowed communities of under 1 million, that means everybody but New York City in New York State law, to pass local laws to lower their speed limits to 25 miles per hour. Because you weren't allowed to, community-wide, lower your speed limit beyond 30 unless you had a crafty mayor. So what we did here in the Village of Mamaroneck is we, we decided, since we can't do every street, we did every street that isn't a cul-de-sac and that isn't a dead end. And we lowered all those streets to 25 miles per hour. So we didn't do every street. No one ever said anything to us, so we did it. But now they're saying you can, by law, say every street's 25 miles per hour. The only caveat is we have to go to New York State for permission on, because they, of course, they exempt themselves, right? We have to go for New York State for permission on Boston Post Road, and I believe Harrison Avenue, Route 127. Is that correct?
Those are the two state roads, yeah.
Those are the two state roads. But we could pass the law and then ask for permission. And I, I've reached out to the town of Mamaroneck to consider doing this, and I've reached out, I'm going to reach out to Large Mountain and Rye to consider doing this. So it's not just in the Village of Mamaroneck, there'll be a whole stretch, you know, from the New Rochelle border to Portchester, and then we'll work on them. US-1 was built as a major highway. It was built, it was the first American highway, and it was, you know, basically built after the Revolutionary War. And it's since been replaced by 95 and a whole bunch of other interstates. And in the communities where, you know, it traverses here in Westchester, it's really like a main street. You know, it's not really a highway anymore. So that should not be a determination of the state that, oh, that's a, that's a major highway, and you can't, you know, because it's already 30 miles an hour. So lowering it to 25, you know, we might have to do some engineering on it, but we haven't engineered it, we hired. So I think that we should.
We got, I just, can I ask us this? We got, we got a memo from the village, and it's confidential unless we want to make it confidential. I think we should talk about it. I mean, I don't think it should be, it doesn't need to be confidential.
We need a vote. Is everybody, is everybody okay with waiving confidentiality on the village attorney's memo, re this law?
I am, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augie.
Chris, is he on?
Yes.
Zachus?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Hey, Murphy?
Hi. Okay. The village attorney, Mark, the assistant village attorney, is he on?
Yes.
Hey, Mark, you there? Sure time to shine. All right, he must have dropped off. He's, he's got a young family.
What's that, the ring's off, talk.
Oh, he's on it. Was he hidden?
Mark, can you speak?
Can you hear me?
I'm not getting your value.
All right. Mark, in sum and substance, what I said, and if we can't hear you, maybe Bob can, is that we're allowed to change the law village-wide and then ask the state for permission on US-1 and Harrison Avenue.
127.
Yes, which is 127. Right?
Give him a second, Mayor. He just switched over to Tyler. Mark, unmute yourself. Mark, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. Can you hear me?
I can't hear you, buddy.
Can you hear me now?
You're very low, pal.
All right, let me try to.
Tom, one second.
Is that better?
Second, Augie's working on something. You're helping me, Augie, not. Mark, Mark, Mark.
Flashback. Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's better.
Okay.
So, Mark, am I correct in saying that we can pass this law, batting fourth, that we could pass this law and then work on getting permission from New York State for the two straight roads that run through the village?
Uh, two. Sorry, can you, is that better? Hello?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry, I heard an echo, if it wasn't me. So the, the issue is that, well, there's two issues. There's the issue with the, the engineering certification. We're waiting to hear from the Department of Transportation to basically see what types of roads those are, because we'd be able, we'd be able to possibly change the speed limit even without necessarily having to ask permission, depending on the types of roads they are. So we're still waiting to hear back from their state Department of Transportation. You can basically, there's two types of state roads in which they can make, they can make changes to speed limits. They can either say that a village can't make a speed limit, or a municipality can't make a speed limit on those roads, or they've already set speed limits for those. And so if it's one of those two, then obviously the village would not be able to do that. So we're just trying to do, to determine from the state whether that's the case for those roads.
Okay. Okay, Mark. My question is, I understand that we have to go to New York State, but we can pass this law and then go to New York State.
We, we can pass law without affecting those two roads in.
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
Hold on. We're having a technical problem tonight. Repeat what you just said.
So we can pass, sorry.
You want me to try to address that?
Yeah.
Bob, go ahead, address it. So there are two issues. The first is to make any change village-wide, you need an engineer's report that's consistent with the state regulations. That, that law changed this year. That was part of the law you mentioned, Mayor?
Yeah.
And it now requires an engineer's report. I think either the village engineer or the village consulting engineer is ready to prepare that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
He's ready to sign a letter.
Yeah, I, I received some additional guidance from, through Assemblyman Otis's office from the state DOT, which was rather opaque, but I did forward that to our traffic engineering consultant, Mr. Carmody. He reviewed it with, internally with his people. He, it's a report that he can, believes he can prepare in about two weeks. There will be a cost to that because it would require a dedication of resources. He estimated about $5,000 to $7,500 to prepare that, but that, it does not need to be stamped and sealed, but it's more of a certification. So I was going to, you know, just bring that up with the board during the work session to let you know about that, that phase of what we need to do.
So then, if, if, if we get past that hurdle, then the only question is the state roads. And to answer your question, Mayor, yes, the village could pass a law that changes the speed limits on state roads. But if the law, if we're ultimately determined that the village had no authority to change those speed limits, and someone were ticketed for violating those speed limits, they could challenge that ticket as being, you know, being unlawful. But you can do it.
Yeah, well, we could, we could let the police department know not to do it until.
And the court would have to figure it out.
Yeah. You know, there, there's no doubt that lowering speed limits saves lives and saves injury and saves damage to property. And, you know, we've had experts in here to tell us that, and New York City recently changed all their speed limits to 25 miles per hour. As I pointed out, as you know well, Bob, you know, the cities over, you know, the New York State law always talks about cities over a million, of which is one. And, you know, they, you know, they reduced their fatalities, they had a lot of problems, Queen Boulevard, and, you know, a lot of the long streets where people picked up speed, and there was, you know, almost in the daily news, once a week, somebody getting killed on one of those streets. And having grown up in that area and seen more than my fair share of people getting hit by cars, children getting killed by cars, I feel, you know, from my experience, and from, you know, being a, an elected official, that, you know, if there are things that we can do to make it less likely that some mother and father will, you know, have to deal with that tragedy, it is really something that we should do. And I, I would hope that we can, you know, if there's a consensus on the board, we can get the draft law, public hearing scheduled for October 24th, scheduling a public hearing on October 24th.
If that's the board's direction, this is one we can do for the next meeting, for sure.
Is that okay with the rest of you?
Yeah, I mean, as long as you think that that's the best way to proceed, that we don't have to, that we'll have, the engineering letter can, can be done in tandem, then sure.
We'll just be scheduled on 24th, so we can schedule it for the end of November or something.
Oh, so we, we schedule the 24th for November public hearing?
Yeah, we have, well, we do have a draft law, but we have to have, and that's, no, we don't have a draft law. We have a draft law from, well, it's from the memo.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
So we have to have that in front of us in order, in order to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, so it's going to happen in front of us in two weeks.
Yeah.
And we schedule a public hearing less than November.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have it.
Yeah.
It's just in the, it's in the executive session, not on our backup.
And my suggestion, my suggestion then is, once you pass the law, then we work with our state representatives to figure out the DOT issue and get a result, and see if we can get it down to 25.
But I thought Bob, Mark said that he had reached out to the state and was waiting for them to get back. Is that true or not?
That's true.
See if we can hear back before we get to a public hearing.
Well, that's up to you. I mean, my view is that the, the only risk of going forward with reducing the speed limit is that there may be a question of enforceability on the state roads until we can get the state on board.
But not on the local roads.
Not on the local roads at all.
Let's be honest, when, when we reduced the speed limits to 25 on most streets, somebody could have made an argument that we were circumventing state law. But, you know, I thought it was the right thing to do, and, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't criminal.
Yeah, I think, and the way we write the laws anyway, it's, you know, section one, section two, section three, that's always the impression that if one section is deemed to be illegal or unconstitutional, it doesn't impact the overall law.
The severability.
Yeah, so there's, it's, we, I, I can't teach, I cannot teach the village attorney how to write a law. He's any better than he already, he's already known for the last X number of years.
Okay, Nora, me, Lou, what do you feel?
Yeah, I'd say go ahead. I mean, the worst that happens is somebody gets out of a ticket down the road, I mean, so on.
All right, so if you could have it, the scheduling, you know, for, on, on a regular session.
For the 24th.
Right on the regular session.
Right on the regular session.
Okay.
Okay. Because we have, you know, we've seen it.
Well, we have it, it has a backup, but.
The public doesn't need to see it until we schedule it. All right, thank you. I think that's a really good thing for the community. Senior citizen rent increase exemption. We are allowed, you know, there's a program, there's seven people who participate in it. If you make less than $35,000 a year, you can get a, a break on your rent. And it's allowed some people to remain in the community. We have an opportunity to go from $35,000 to $50,000. So people making less than $50,000 can then participate in this program. And I think the state had said it shouldn't really that much impact our costs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I spoke to someone from New York Home and Communities Renewal. They are the state agency which manages this program. What I was told that is in communities that have increased their income threshold, there has not been a measurable increase in costs in the municipality. I think right now we have four or five properties that are currently taking advantage of the SCREE program in the village, so it likely wouldn't have much of a financial impact for us. Our annual cost is somewhere around $7,000 to participate in this program, so it's, it's a pretty, you know, fair cost for, you know, what it gets for these residents. The other item I did talk about was DREE, the Disabled Resident Income Exemption. And you asked me to get some information on that. I spoke with the, again, the same person at the state. Countywide, there are 10 people participating in that program, so I, I can't imagine that we would have a tremendous amount of participants from the village, but, you know, it's, it likely, again, would not be a very negative impact on our budget. And then there was also the question about the homeowner equivalent to this. And I think the, the short version is the state allows up to $37,400. I think we're currently at the old maximum level, which was 26,900. Not necessarily the same conversation, but the question was asked at the last meeting about, for property owners, what that exemption levels are.
Say that one more time.
So there's a separate program under the New York State Bureau of Property Tax Law for homeowners making less than a certain amount of income to receive a percentage reduction in their assessed valuation. And that's, that's due to, that question came up at the last session. So the income level for that program is currently set in the village at $26,900. That was based, I think the village adopted this back in 1999. And at that point, that was the maximum level. It's been increased over the years. The maximum level now, and it's been that since, I believe, 2011, is $37,400. So it's still, you know, it's a, it's a low number, but it's a number. So, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well, because.
We should look at that, too.
Yeah. But as far as, you know, SCREE and DREE, I think we're just kind of waiting to see what the, the board's pleasure is, if you want us to look at revising the local law or, yeah, not doing anything.
Okay, well, let's, let's concentrate on the rent first.
I think we should do it.
Yeah, the rent's too darn high. So wait one second.
The maximum level we can go up to is 50. I think the, the chart I gave you shows there are a number of municipalities at 50. I think there's one or two that maybe at 40,000, between 40 and 45,000. Compared to our municipal sisters, the town of Mamaroneck and the village of Larchmont, we are higher than they are right now. I think the town of Mamaroneck is at 29,000.
They are parsimonious.
Yes, but I'm just trying to give you some local benchmarks and what the, the county benchmarks are.
And we have more people needing support. So I'd be fine going to 3, to full 50.
Yeah, fine.
Sure. Because all this is doing is helping our residents who are struggling to stay here. And there are a lot of them who are struggling to stay here. And there are a lot of them who are struggling to stay here. And, you know, this is something I'm sure at home on the sound would be great to hear.
And ultimately, it doesn't impact the overall tax levy.
No.
It just changes slightly how it's apportioned.
Yeah.
Did you, what about the sister program of DRE? Is that something you wanted to?
Why don't we get more information on that and put it in our next board session?
Well, I think he's got it. It's the homeowner one that we don't have.
Oh, okay, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's the one that there are 10 people countywide.
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Lou?
Yes, yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get a law?
You want another law?
Another law?
Sure.
It'll be a law.
It'll be a law.
Sure, that's not another hard one, so.
We're giving out laws, that's all right. Moses.
No.
Ever see, this is one of the funniest scenes of a movie I ever saw. Mel Brooks, he's Moses and he's coming down a mountain, he's got three tablets.
The 15 commandments.
The Lord Jehovah has given me these 15. And one of them falls.
10.
He goes, 10. All right, so we're making a lot of progress tonight. Army Corps project we've done already. Support the clean water, clean air, green jobs, environmental bond.
Yes, 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 yes.
Everybody fine with, this is a resolution supporting, which would be proposition number one on your ballot, turn over your ballot this year.
Yep.
And this is supporting money for infrastructure, for the environment, and for flooding, and clean water, which this community really needs the money for, for the filtration plant. This will benefit us, all of us.
Absolutely.
So, everybody fine with putting that out for the regular meeting?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Dan?
Yeah.
Wireless.
It was discussed at our last meeting to do that.
George came in and told us about it.
Yeah, but we.
Wireless edge application for recertification of special use permit. This is the cell phone tower behind the salt shed.
That's correct.
Okay, this is a requirement that the Lord has to come in every five years.
Yeah, and because the village owns the property, the village board is the authorizing board in this case.
So do we have, do we give the, we have an annual payment that they give us for that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it's based on their subleases for the facility, but, yeah.
I can't hear what you're saying.
The, the rent that they pay us is, I believe it's a, like, a commission on what they're making for their subleases. I think what is it, about $90,000 a year that we're getting? Yeah, it's a significant number. And I know that they're looking to bring on at least one more carrier for the site.
Every carrier increases our income.
Yep.
So do we have an agreement of what we have, they have to pay, and has it been the same since inception, or have we increased it over time?
I believe it's a percentage, so as their, if their annual lease payments go up, ours are going up, but I can take a look at it.
And what, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is this marketplace price, or is other communities getting a different rate that is higher?
My experience is that, and it's only one community, we were leasing out specific locations, and, you know, we had many more sites. We were leasing them out, I think we were making less per physical site than we are right now. You know, we were, I think, making something like, when I left, it was $35,000 a year, going up at 4% a year, or the rate of inflation, whichever was higher. So I think we've always made more from our sites than what I've seen other communities, but we, I'd have to, that's a, that's a pretty significant type of study, because, you know, the, between public property, private properties, I can only get information from, you know, local governments that are leasing their sites.
I don't have any problem with renewing the permit, but I think as part of that, we should know whether we're getting the fair market price for it or not. It's a substantive amount of money which we want, but if it's not market price, then I think we should be doing whatever the market is doing. And so I don't have any problem putting it on for the next meeting, if you come back, you know, and tell us that's a fair price or not, I just.
Just let me clear something up. This isn't about renegotiating a contract. What this is about is, in the contract, a clause saying every five years they have to get recertified. It isn't about the contract itself.
I understand that, Mayor.
So what are you proposing? Let's just say we were getting less or getting more. Would you want to say, I'm not going to agree to it? Is that not what the law is?
Let me ask it a different way. When's the contract up?
I don't have that answer. I can find out.
This is a type of information that I think we should be having when we are doing that. Not that we shouldn't be doing it, but I think we need to be aware of what we're doing, and if, you know, there's a better benefit that we should be getting. And that's part of the discussion that I would have with them if that's the case. So I would like that information.
I'll see what I can get, but I said, I don't know how complete of information I'll be able to get, because.
Do you have any doubt that we're not maximizing our benefit here?
Do I have any doubt that we're not doing something?
I mean, I mean.
I am confident that we are getting.
We have, we have a contract with them.
Correct.
When that contract is up, that's the time to renegotiate the contract. This is the recertification, which is not part of that.
That's, that's correct.
So we can't now try and hold them up when that isn't part of the negotiating process. That's called negotiating in dead faith, and it's not the way you do this. This is part of the law that we passed, that we have to recertify every five years.
And the lease, the initial lease is for five years, and it can be extended 11 times for five years, and it was 2006, so we don't have the option to not.
No.
We're in this, we're in this for another 55 or so years.
Right.
Each renewal should be on the same terms and conditions as set forth herein.
So you'll remind us when we get to the end?
55 years? Yeah, I'll call you, yeah. I'll use my cellphone.
All right, so is there a consensus to put this on?
Yes.
Yeah.
No. Nora?
Yeah.
Thank you. Comprehensive plan update, proposal for public, additional public engagement requested by Board of Trustees on for October 24th, regular meeting. Dan, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, I believe it was at the last, so the first meeting in September, Neil, this eye from Hardesty and Hanover made a presentation. The board asked him to conduct some additional outreach and come back with a proposal for that, and this is following up on that, on the board's request.
My only concern is that we don't have a timeframe. And it may just be that.
Part of that may be, part and parcel of being asked to do additional work.
Right. But I think it would be, I mean, I think this proposal's fine, I just, would be great if we could just sort of revise the timeframe, and, because the whole project's later than it was going to be, which is understandable.
Okay, it's on for, it's on for the 24th?
It's on for the 24th, and just, I would like a little more information about what the timeframe's going to be.
Okay, 2E, petitions, we're going to get through everything tonight. Petitions for new sidewalks on Ralph, I'm sorry, for new sidewalks on New Street, Ralph Avenue, Elliott Avenue, and Underhill Avenue. Jerry, you want to talk about this?
Is he there?
He was here. He's attending to.
I don't think he's here.
A relative, so he's popping in and out.
Yeah, so this came, this request came in, we have a project next year, the first segment of the Mamaroneck Avenue School Improvements, for which we have CDBG funding. I was originally going to see if there was a way in which we could, see if we could add this to that project, have the county do design work, which would save the village some significant money, and then, you know, have a larger project based on that. The short version is they can't do that, because that was, that project was part of the fiscal year 1920, '21 CDBG program. They have done all the environmental for that, they've closed it out, so they really can't reopen it. The, what we could do as a follow-up is, our next CDBG projects are scheduled to occur most likely in calendar year 2025, around the Mamaroneck Avenue School. In speaking with one of our, my contacts from the county planning office, she mentioned what we could do is send a letter to the commissioner of planning, asking that they reconsider funding our next phase of the Mamaroneck Avenue School Improvements, instead of year two of the three-year cycle and year one of that three-year cycle, which would allow us to do it in possibly 2024. So that's kind of where we stand with that, if we want to have the county do the design work, and then we can get it as part of a larger project.
The petition talks about damage done by the floods. Could we get FEMA money for this?
We could ask, but I think the issue is that we had to have everything, all the damage claims submitted by, I want to say, maybe February or March of this year, so they may not.
The thing about floods and water is that, you know, it's insidious, and it gets in stuff, and then, you know, the winter comes, and it freezes, and it raises the sidewalk.
I said, we could ask, I mean.
We're going to ask.
Yeah, absolutely. The worst that happens if we ask is they say no.
Yeah, I know.
But. Back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
And we should get an estimate of what it would cost.
I mean, one of the things is that we have kind of a vague policy on sidewalks, so, you know, sometimes, I mean, if a homeowner has a problem, it's the homeowner's obligation to repair a sidewalk. And so, but, you know, when we did the, when we did the Mamaroneck Avenue sidewalks on the main part of the avenue, the commercial district, it was a CBD money. And I think in some cases, when we can leverage, depending what the census tract is, we can leverage state and federal monies to do these things.
Yeah.
But, but in some cases, you know, homeowners bear the responsibility themselves, and I think that, I think we should, I think that's a conundrum that we should be thinking, be mindful of, like, in what situations is it the homeowner's obligation to fix a sidewalk? And in what situations can the village step in and do it? Because, you know, obviously, if, in order to put in new sidewalks, it's a village project. A homeowner can't decide to put a sidewalk in front of their house. But once we do it, they typically have to maintain it.
Yeah, that's, that's New York State laws, that the abutting property owner is responsible for maintenance of the sidewalk.
In this situation, we may be able to leverage some CB.
CDBG.
CBD, CBD money.
Everyone wants to say CBGBs, that they can go to the club.
Yeah, that's exactly where I was going.
And that's what we've done, I think, historically for the last 30 years.
When we can.
Yeah, and, you know, because of, you know, the demographics in this community, we've been very successful in leveraging that CDBG money. We've probably received millions and millions of dollars, and I can say that without even having to go back over every contract.
Okay, I was just thinking, too, about the $3 billion I was talking about before with Mr. Sayed.
I'm not sure that would pay for sidewalks, but.
But, yeah, it's infrastructure damage by floods.
But I think it's worth asking about, about FEMA money, because this is, this is, this is an IDA problem.
What we should do is ask the manager's office to contact the county, send a letter, and contact FEMA, and, you know, and see if any of their avenue or both can open up for this.
So that, you talk about the, asking the county, do we consider the funding year for this project? Okay, yeah, I can, I can put that layer together this week.
We allowed for a catch-all category for infrastructure money with FEMA, $5 million.
Yeah. But we.
Oh, you're talking about what's being reimbursed from our various projects? I mean, and, and part of that is, we probably will be between administrative time, equipment use, there will be a likelihood that we will be able to recoup monies above and beyond what was actually physical, actually spent, but, you know, accounting for all those other other factors, so. But I don't have that number.
And if we could get a ballpark on what it would cost to.
Okay.
We'll also have portions of the sidewalks to the railroad that we've talked about, that also were damaged in the flood and also need to be rehabilitated, and those are, those are really dangerous.
And some near the Hillside Avenue Bridge.
Yeah, and that was the request that came in from the pastor of the church several months back. And, you know, I had, there was no, I had known that, you know, that the church, St. Peter's, was looking at this and probably going to request it, so I thought it might be, we're going to do some improvements around some of the religious.
I really think this is a priority.
How much is this, Dan?
What we're asking for is $19,500 for this fiscal year, and for next fiscal year, we would request the balance. $20,000 is, once you go over that number, that requires a sealed bid solicitation to furnish and deliver, so we wanted to, you know, be able to move a little more swiftly, so.
Next year is?
I think the overall cost was going to be around $30,000, so we would probably look at what the balance will be next, as we prepare the budget for fiscal year '23, '24, and include a request for funding in the general fund budget.
Yeah, and, and, and we really need to get a handle on this.
We have to. And, you know, another.
Wait, wait, you know Sally saying that they can't be heard?
No.
They're just a rabbit, okay.
And, I mean, I think the other thing is, this is not a significant amount of money, it's just, we're, you know, we're adding up, but, you know, this is what we're not Well, did you not read the memo from the 30th?
No.
Really?
Yeah, I looked at it and I was like, I'm not doing this.
So I, this is, that's why I put it on. I was sort of surprised and it was.
I would have read it in my packet when I opened my packet last night.
Well, I mean, we got this memo a week ago Friday as a proposal and I circulated it to everybody to put on the agenda and there was a little kerfuffle about it getting on the agenda. And it didn't get on the agenda till today as backup, the item did. But, you know, but now it is on, it's backup and there's also a second memo that Jerry wrote. And, you know, the first memo is that there would be, the village manager wants to change, wants to eliminate some boards and commissions and to change HCZM from, to an advisory completely, it's advisory to us, but to an advisory board, to combine the tree committee and the committee for the environment, to eliminate budget, water quality, industrial area, traffic and flood, to eliminate those volunteer-based committees and change them to internal staff committees only with one BOT liaison. And then to have the ad hoc tennis, police reform, marine education committee, ad hoc ethics committee and ad hoc recreation committee all expire at the end of this year. I think the tennis committee has completed its work, so has the PRC. The marine education committee has met, I don't think it's an ad hoc committee. The ad hoc ethics committee has completed its work and it's, it's gone. And the ad hoc, it's ad hoc year-round recreation committee hasn't met for a while because of COVID and I think they're sort of inactive. But, and initially, this was supposed to be discussed in November. I, I think that these are all things that the manager doesn't have authority to do. It's, these are all committees or commissions that were formed either by law or by, by law, so the board of trustees had to adopt a law, or by resolution. So I think that this is sort of more of a policy conversation.
It's definitely a policy.
And Jerry, and so Jerry amended this to say, to say now, to just make, to say it's slightly different and he has more information about it. So maybe, you know, maybe it isn't the elimination of committees, but I just thought that this is, this is a big change from how the village has operated for 30 or 40 years and I just thought it was worth a conversation.
And it's also not a great time to do it. I'm not interested in doing it now. I didn't ask for it. He can bring it to us at a later time.
Listen, let's just.
Yeah.
Norah's right. Boards and commissions and their formation and elimination and machinations are up to the board of trustees. What Mr. Barbario was doing was making suggestions based upon his experience and his observations. And that's, that's good. That doesn't, that doesn't mean we got to go along with it. That doesn't mean it's going to happen. You know, I'm not in favor of eliminating boards and commissions that are active and useful. As Norah pointed out, there are some that have gone past their due date, these are some of these ad hocs committees. But I think it's a time to have a discussion, not now, but a meaningful discussion about making sure the boards and commissions know their mission and making sure new members know what their parameters of their responsibilities are and how they can best help the village. The whole idea of having boards and commissions is to help the village move forward, right? To help this board, to help staff, not, not to become a burden to staff, not to get mixed up in political machinations, not to do any of that. It, it's about trying to take that particular area, whether it's traffic or whether it's recreation, or whether it's, you know, planning or zoning or, you know, whatever, and just, you know, how do I make this work better for the village? And I think that, you know, we've put a lot of people on boards and commissions and everybody's working hard and trying to do the right thing, but they need also to be, you know, guided in terms of what their responsibilities and duties are, under the resolution that formed them and under, you know, the law if they're required to follow certain laws or they were a product of laws in the community. So I think what we should do out of this is come up with mission statements for various boards and committees so that they know what their responsibility is, they know what their lane is. And that way they can concentrate on that and do a better job at that. Because sometimes I see people getting diverted by other things and, and it's all with good intentions, but, you know, it, it diverts you from your primary purpose. And primary purpose of these boards are very important and it shouldn't be a drag upon them to serve this way. You know, I think that it's up to us and liaisons too, to provide, you know, both advice and guidance and also for us to get together as a group, you know, probably, you know, after things settle down, the election and decide, you know, what's the primary mission of group A, group B, group C?
Yeah.
And then, you know, express that to that group so that they know what their responsibilities and their duties are.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't think it's the time now. I just, I don't know why it came up now.
It came up, I don't know why Jerry brought it up now, is that the question? I mean, it came up because Jerry brought it up. I mean, that was, that was why.
You know, I mean, but, but there's no reason for us to do it.
But Tom, can you give me an example of where they've.
I don't have to, Dan. I just, you know, I don't have to. Thank you though.
Because every, every board and commission, advisory or not, has had a mission statement when it was created.
Right. Do we tell, do we tell the people when they get appointed with their mission statement?
Yeah, Sally sends it to everyone.
And, well.
Unless we're talking about changing their mission statements, that's a whole different issue. Is that what we're talking about?
I'm talking about making sure they're adhering to their mission statement. I'm talking about making sure that, you know, trustees are leading them properly and, you know, situations like that.
I mean, you know, I was, when I, when I came on, I, I didn't even, I had no idea what the, what the commission, you have a commission, you have a traffic commission meeting, you know, and, and I'm not sure anybody else on the traffic, you know, it was just, you know, it, it wasn't, in any event, it's not, now I don't think now's the time to do it. Certainly not, not when we're going to sit a new board in a couple of months.
And it's always good to relook at things as a board, to say, is this what we want them to be doing? Is this where we want them to go with this? Should we expand? Should we contract? Do they have enough members? Is it unwieldy to have so many members? Do they need more members? It's always good to relook at things.
All right, so.
That might be the first time, and God knows when, we conclude the agenda.
How about that?
Time on the clock. We still have advisor counsel and.
Our executive session.
I'm well aware. Good night.
Good night.
Tonight, we have advisor counsel on a ZBA letter. Bob, you're going to have to be the counsel.
There's no, well, there's, the parties who are, who need to be here aren't here, so I don't think there's any point in doing it. I think it needs to be postponed again.
Why? I mean, I don't think that, let me just tell you something before we do this. If we're inviting someone who isn't on this board into advisor counsel, I'm not waiving my confidentiality with my attorney.
I'm not, I'm not saying that Bob shouldn't be here. What I'm saying.
No, it's not about Bob. It's about the person you bring in.
Well.
You can't, you can't have a person.
I didn't put this on, I don't, I don't know why this, I put this on, I did not put this on for advisor counsel. I put it on for an executive session.
Under what?
Under discussing the performance of a series of people. So, and with specific people who should have been invited to the meeting. One could not attend because of the timing of it and had sent, there's correspondence about that and no one got back to that person today except I did at the end of the day. And another seems not to have been invited until today. So I'm going to try again for two weeks from now.
The caveat that I just told you, I'm not, I'm not waiving my attorney-client privilege by having someone in the room who's not on this board in an advisor counsel.
I'm, I don't want advisor counsel, I want an executive session.
Same thing.
Well, then, then, then maybe two other trustees will. There, I think.
What is this about? I mean.
It's about the letter we got.
It's about two letters that we've received.
All right. I mean, we're not, are we obligated to respond to the letters?
No.
So, you know, we got a letter. Done.
Well, you might be done. I think there's, there's a reason to not necessarily respond to the letter, have a conversation about it.
Put it on for executive session, find.
I will try again.
Fits into the criteria.
I will try again.
All right. I need a motion to go into executive session for two items. The first is Save the Sound versus Village Merrick. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to 1051D of the New York State Public Offices Law to discuss matters of ongoing litigation. And the next is 2B, Ad Hoc Dog Park Committee. It is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to 1051F of the New York State Public Offices Law to discuss matters leading to the appointment of a particular person or persons.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, call. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
May Murphy?
Hi.
All right. LMC, we are going to go into the side room.
Tom.
Good evening. First thing I'd like to do is close the work session. I need a motion to close the work session.
So moved.
Second. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Leavis.
Thank you.
For your safety, it's an emergency exit to my right. Those brown doors are also an emergency exit. Please put your cell phones or any other electronic device on a...
Mute.
Mute, please. Thank you. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Augie Cork. Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Trustee, Najas?
Yes.
Trustee, Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor, Murphy? No. Communication through the board first. Okay, just, I do this at every meeting, Norm. Just let me tell folks, there's a five-minute time limit and it applies to everyone. So, thank you. Go ahead, Norm.
Norm Rosenbloom, Carol Avenue, Maranick, New York. This in regards to something that was just discussed at the work session and basically a proposal to amend and/or eliminate volunteer boards. I believe the claim of the Village of Maranick's manager authority to amend and/or remove any board or commission is wrong and certainly is so illustrated by New York State Village law. As noted, 3-308, separate boards and commissions, 3-308.3. The Board of Trustees shall establish the composition, the powers, the duties, and responsibilities of each Board of Commissioners and may from time to time amend the same. 3-308.8. The Board of Trustees may abolish any such board or boards established under any prior provision of law. If not so abolished, such board or board shall continue and the commissioners thereof shall continue in office during their respective terms. 3-308.9. Any action of the trustees hereunder establishing, relating to, or abolishing any such board or fixing terms of office of the members thereof shall be by resolution or local law, adopted at a regular meeting by a majority of the entire board. No such action shall be taken unless a public hearing has first been held, which at least 10 days' public notice shall be given in a publication of the Village, of the official village newspaper, or if there is none, in a newspaper of general circulation in the village. 4-412, 1A, the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees may create or abolish by resolution offices, boards, agencies, and commissions, and delegate to set offices, boards, agencies, and commissions so much of its powers, duties, and functions as it deems necessary effectuating or administrating the Board of Trustees' duties and functions. I unequivocally state, as noted, Richard Slingeland, former village manager, did not, as claimed, seek to eliminate all advisory and non-mandated boards or commissions, particularly during the eight-year term as mayor of the Village of Maranick. I note in the instance that any board or commission established by the Board of Trustees, its mandate and operating procedure is clearly noted in either local law or code, as just noted in 3-308.3. Further, this discussion by the Board of Trustees of contemplating now or in the near future the termination and/or amendment to broad-based Village of Maranick resident volunteers, in my opinion, is an exercise that attacks the very strength and characteristic of the Village of Maranick, which is its volunteers, and certainly the greatest sources and successes of our representative form of government, that being by the people and for the people. Does this Board of Trustees wish to have their legacy as creating the death of democracy in the former friendly Village of Maranick by eliminating the village volunteers, as clearly noted in an email to department heads and Board of Trustees? I think not.
Thank you. Next.
Glandipet, 506 Hill Street. I am a member of the Budget Committee. I am here speaking on my own behalf. I too read the memo, and quite frankly, I found it very insulting. Every member of any board that gets appointed gives you a resume. You don't simply say, "Oh, I want to be on a board." It says, they give you a resume of their accomplishments and their qualifications. And at that point, you, as the mayor and the Board of Trustees, look at the resumes that are presented to you, and you make appointments to the boards. You have experts on the boards. I am on the Budget Committee. The people who work with me on the Budget Committee are experts at budgets. A couple of them in the public sector, a couple of them in the private sector. I am an expert on budgets. I run my own corporation, my own company. You run a camp? I did a one-day show down with my partner, Orlando, spent $200,000, 200 hotel rooms, 45 flights, 40 guests, 14,000 photographs to be signed, 5,000 trading cards, toys, games, the logistics of getting back and forth, everybody getting paid. That's not an expert? I know as much about this budget as anybody in this village outside of Augie. Plain and simple. Want to ask me a question? Go ahead. Ask me any question. We have people on the planning board. I watch them. They are knowledgeable, they're experts. The Board of Appeals, Coastal Management. And to turn around and say, "We need to assign an expert to the board." When you assign these people to the boards, you are assigning experts. You are assigning knowledgeable people. And not every single person has to be 100% Harvard graduate to be on the board, because you also need a local flavor on the board, because just because you're an expert doesn't mean you know anything about the local village. 30 years ago, the highway department, because they enlonged the highways, wanted to come in and on Maranick Avenue on 95, wanted to shut the two exits going to White Plains and Maranick Avenue and make you go all the way up to where the water plant was in order to get on the highway. This room was filled with 100 people. And you know what? Our local people designed that highway the way it is now, that you have the divider and you can get it on and off, and we didn't close those exits. The so-called experts from the state would have just simply closed the experts. Our people said no, and we did the design, and that was the result. So I am looking for one thing right now. I am looking for a pledge from the mayor and the trustees that for at least one reorganization year, that redesigning or eliminating budgets will not be brought up. I don't want you saying that, "Oh, we're not going to talk about it now," and then in December, when you have the reorganization meeting, guess what? It's back. I want the mayor and the trustees to have the guts, right now, to tell Village residents that, you know what? We may study it in the future, but we pledge, at least for this year, as part of the reorganization in December, that this will not be brought up. Thank you.
Hey, guys. Jimmy Abadi. I just want to say two things. As far as dissembling the committees, listen, they're taxpayers, they don't have to be experts. We lived here a long time. We look at traffic, we look at the parks, recreation, you know. You guys don't have to agree with anything the committee says. So, you know, to, you know, get rid of them, when I think everybody has a valid opinion on these committees. We see the parking, we see the traffic, we see what goes on. I don't know what went different in your mind that you needed to get away with a committee. I don't think it's a smart idea. Everybody has an idea, they all work together, and they bring it to the board. If the board doesn't agree with it, then they don't agree with it. But to disassemble and get rid of the committees, it's not right, because we are taxpayers and we don't have to be experts on everything, but we do have opinions, and they should be brought forward to you guys, and then you can make a decision whether we're right or wrong. And so to get rid of it or not. Well, my other thing I wanted to say is, I'm not understanding the dredging thing. I don't know, when the Army Corps was here, when they were talking about permits, if that was for dredging, but we have not seen one... But we, we, we have not seen one thing happen, we're still waiting for permits for dredging. It's over a year, hurricane season's here, it's going to be almost over, but we haven't done anything. And I don't understand why it's taken so long for the permits. I just wanted to throw that out.
Just, just two things about the permits. We have done a lot in the rivers, we've cleaned out the rivers, we had crews working in the rivers on overtime for weeks. The permits, you know, we, we got the permits we needed from Westchester, we got the permits we needed from DEC, and then the Army Corps said, "You have to get this too." So we, we hired a consultant to get those and they should be here momentarily. About what you're saying, and a couple of speakers have said about boards and commissions, you were all here for the work session. You heard me say I had no interest in this, right? And then we had a discussion about this. I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not here to, you know, I'm not a performing SEAL, so I'm not going to take a pledge or anything like that. But I encourage people, if they want to know how we feel, to look at the, the minutes and the tape of the work session. I don't think there was any member of this board who was supportive of that. The village manager, in his role, often makes suggestions and determinations that are his opinion about, you know, what would work for the village. And as you said, even any board or commission, we have the right and responsibility to either, you know, deny that or say, "We'll think about something else." And that's what happened here tonight.
Yeah, and we appreciate it, Mayor. My point is that you did bring it up, so as a taxpayer...
No, no, I'm not saying...
I'm bringing it up. And as far as the, the cleaning of the rivers, my neighbors, we're the ones who brought everybody down there and pointed out all the stuff that needed to be cleaned out. And basically, they cleaned out some trees and some paper. We're talking about dredging. I'm not talking about trees and paper.
And you know...
Big difference.
And we're waiting to do it, we put the money there.
Well, that's why we're just asking, what's, I don't know why the big holdup, that's all.
I, I can safely say that dozens of truckloads of stuff has come out of that river.
We, we've removed a tremendous amount of...
I mean, it's, it's not, it's not just a little, I mean, it's, it's a lot, a lot of material and a lot of material, but, well, there's a lot of material came out.
Listen, we, we understand, but we're, you know, there's a lot that needs to be done.
I'm with you. You, you heard me with them, I'm not happy, I'm, I'm not happy with the lack of urgency, but, but I'll tell you right now, there are people in this community who, who, who wanted to make sure that we got all the permits, they wanted every, I mean, they were, they were really pushing the, the whole permit thing. I would, I would have gone ahead with or without permits.
Well, supposedly, they said they, Jerry had said they were pushing it through as an emergency, and then he said people needed the permits, so they had to go get the permits. But, you know, that's, that's, that's a couple of months ago also.
And, and, and these, these, and I call them the snipers, they, they spooked the contractor and, and he's, and he, and he's waiting for the permits now.
All right.
That's what happened.
We're working on it, Jim.
Thank you.
State your name, please.
Bernie Camarda, 904 Ralph Avenue. So that ACE meeting didn't go too well tonight. She said that we can't dredge. I, I came like right at that point, I, I went on TV, but she said that you can't dredge, Mamaronek can't dredge anything because it's going to affect their...
No, that's not, that's...
Oh, okay.
Absolutely not what she said.
I, I came in halfway, so that was a question.
What she said, what, the question, I think trustee Young proposed to her, is, would our dredging help the situation? And she said yes. And she was asked, "Is there any problem with us doing the dredging in areas where they're not doing, you know, the specific plan?" And she said, "Absolutely not." She, and she, I would say, encouraged us to dredge.
Okay, because I came in halfway, that was one of my questions.
What you also said, how...
We were pushing her to, 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 to light a fire under them on, on these, on these permits. I don't know, she didn't seem inclined to do that, but that's what we were...
No, I think she didn't have, you know, she, she's already advocated for us with the permit people.
So, and then she also said that it was going to be one to two years for the design process, not even going into the rivers, one to two years, which contradicts her statement when she was in Emlyn, when they said they were going to come in May of 2023 to start dredging and start the project. So now, she said it's one to two years out. That's what she said tonight. So, I, I don't know, I don't see, I don't see the urgency from you guys, from, from, from anyone. This... Look, the ACE is going upstream without a paddle, okay? There's, we need parallel mitigation, we need to look into the dam, we need to look into the reservoir. I know I sound like a broken record, but it's, the broken record is going to keep saying it. We need to talk to the county about the reservoir, we need to talk to, and we need to get a dam and fix the problem. We need preventative measures, okay? We can't lay our hat on the ACE project because they're going to come two years from now, maybe, and then we're going to be in the same boat. So we can't lay our hats on it. And after they, after they finish, they're not even guaranteeing that we, we're not going to get flooded anymore. They're telling me my basement is still going to get flooded, which is ludicrous to me. Why are you spending 88 million, why are they spending $88 million and I'm still going to get flooded? So, you guys gotta, you guys gotta change gears here and we gotta look into that disaster of a reservoir and the disaster of a dam and we have to start figuring something out.
I know you didn't, I know you didn't see the meeting.
I did see the meeting.
I, I directly addressed that.
I know you did, I know you did.
But, but you're saying there's no sense of urgency. You know, I, I address that every time I see the county executive, I address that every time I see, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm trying to get across...
I just want to reinforce it to you guys, that what I've been saying for over a year has got to be listened to. One, two, three, four, five, he's somewhere, okay? You guys have to start listening to what I have to say and we have to start focusing on the flood problem. Because I always said it, it's number one problem of Mamaronek. All the pet projects, throw them out the window, because enough is enough, we're sick and tired of getting flooded.
Bro, Bernie, we're with you.
I know. Lou, it took me a year to get a resolution for the dam, to study the dam, one year, come on. We need, we need parallel mitigation. Let the ACE do their job, let them do their job. They're, they're, it's a cluster, whatever you want to call it, and I get it. I know, I know. But this board needs to change gears a little bit and realize that the ACE is a, is a bunch of you-know-whats and it, and it has to be, we, we need to change gears. And we have to start worrying about other things and I get it. You've got to stop worrying about river gauges and all that other stuff. So we got to just have the urgency, and I know you'd have the urgency, but, and I know you guys were thrown off and the mood changed after she made her announcement that it was one to two years. And I get it.
I'm not happy.
But, but I know, I know you're not. And I'm not happy either. But let's, let's all get together and let's band together and do preventative measures. Thank you.
Good evening, Laura Abadi. I'm speaking as a resident, not as a member of the Traffic Commission. I want to piggyback off of what everybody has said this morning and this evening in regard to flooding. It is the parallel mitigation that we do need and we are getting your support and we know that you are trying. I think what we need at this point is clear, defined bullets of what our village can do as far as parallel mitigation. I know we're waiting for dredging, I know we're waiting for those permits to happen, but I feel deeply and for everybody involved that there's a lot more that we could be doing as a village to support parallel mitigation. The Army Corps is coming, they're going to do their thing. We, that's their, their thing, their job. We can't just limit it to dredging the rivers or cleaning out the rivers. We, we, the residents need, the people who are affected need to hear what that actual flood mitigation plan looks like, touch it and feel it and understand it and what is on your mind, what is the plan? Show us on paper how we're going to execute this, how are you going to support the residents that are affected? Are you going to give them sort of buyback or some sort of levy to be able to put drywells into their yards? Are you, are you going to sponsor any programs of such? There's so many things that you can be collecting and bullying and helping to support the Army Corps. How are we going to do that as a community to move forward quickly? I mean, right now, they're rebuilding the bridge on Sanibel Island, quickly. This, this goes back, not just this, this goes back for years, 1974, we haven't had real definitive parallel mitigation in support of any program coming our way. How are we, as a board and as a community together, going to make a checklist of what's going to happen, what month it's going to happen in, what year it's going to happen in, what the budget is? How are we going to support that to make everybody stop asking the questions and stop living in bated breath? That's the concern, I think that's, that's it in a nutshell. We're speaking parallel mitigation in, in this big, you know, wide abyss without any clarification. How, how are we going to get that and what is the plan to get there?
Thank you.
I, I understand, thank you, but can we have a dialogue? Is there anything on the, on the, on the horizon for that?
Well, you, you know that there's...
We know what you're doing, yes. We, and we appreciate that and we are saying thank you and we know, with, that's not the question, but there's so much more that needs to happen to support this. I mean, we're talking miles and miles of water that's going to come again and we're scared.
I understand that.
You know? We're scared. We don't know what lies ahead for us.
This is a valid point and I understand the trepidation and the anxiety. We, we're working with the Flood Committee, that they're, you know, they have proposed some options. We, we hired a village engineer to look over some of these options and I know the immediacy, this should have happened 25 years ago, this should have happened 40 years ago. But right now, in the past year, there's been more happening than happened in the 40 years before that.
Absolutely, but...
And, and I understand that doesn't alleviate the, the fear or the anxiety, but we are working on it and, you know, we will continue to work on it, I guarantee you.
Our fear is that wheels of motion is stopping.
It, it should, yeah, and I don't think that's going to happen. Yeah, I can just say for myself, you know, like, I'm not going to live on this board, but as, as long as I'm on this board, it's not going to happen. And I can guarantee that. And you hold me to it, that's why we have the mic and that's why we have elections.
That's, it's not even a matter of politics right now, it's a matter of necessity, you know?
I understand, but, you know, that's how you make people accountable.
But, but you, both you and Bernie and others are correct, that flooding is going to continue. And until you, until the confluence is unstopped, if you will, until the, until the rivers are cleared so that the water can escape, the Army Corps plan is very clear, people are still going to flood. They may not flood up to the second floor, but they're going to flood in the basements and some are going to flood in the first floor. And the Corps plan is very clear about that.
I understand, yes.
And there, there are opportunities for that to be alleviated if the board really wants to push that. But so far, I'm the lone voice in that. And I think that I'm got the floor. Excuse me, Lou, I am talking, you can...
You have a lone voice?
Yeah.
It's absurd, break. It's absolutely absurd and it's...
So, you know...
Insulting to everyone on the board.
You can feel whatever you want.
I do.
And you keep interrupting and that's been the case, you know, for months.
Okay.
And that's fine. And you can do whatever you want to do and you can say whatever you want to do.
Okay.
But the facts are the facts and that's part of the issue, you know? And I agree with the other speakers about Jerry, but let's talk about the dredging for a minute. This board and the administration and Jerry knew that they had to have permits and decided that they didn't want to, they didn't need all the permits, they were only going to go to the county and then were told that they had to go to the others. That was months and months of delay. So I don't, you know, people don't want to know the facts, but those are the facts.
But I, we could agree to disagree in that area because an emergency is an emergency, that's why I related the whole bridge item with Sanibel Island. I'm sure that permits didn't come through for those bridges to be recreated, but they were a necessity.
Exactly.
Sometimes permits are important, sometimes you have to go back and revisit them to make sure something is happening to prevent something. Sometimes we can follow rules, sometimes we need to bend them for the benefit of everyone else. And that's what's happening here at our expense, like I spoke last week about the transfer center and the smell, it's always at the expense of the people who are suffering.
I understand.
You know, and that, that's what I want to drive home, we have to find a definitive plan, we have to stop talking about, you know, six specific items and really hone in on, you know, a timeline of how we're going to support the Army Corps. They're coming, we need to...
You're right, I beg your time, so thank you very much, you made a lot of cogent points. Next.
Hi, Daniela Camarda, 904 Ralph Avenue.
Hi, Daniela.
Hi. I thank you for everything you are trying to do. I am just, I'm a little bit upset that I feel, you know, that you really have to have our backs. No disrespect, but I really don't think you guys are pulling your weight. I think you need to fight for us and I don't feel the fight. I don't feel it. And I don't know what more we have to do as residents to keep pushing and pushing and pushing, but at some point, you guys have to take on the reins and start doing something about this. Otherwise, we're all going to die. I don't want to die again because I already did and I, I have to come back and fight my way every day. Okay? So let's try to make this a process that we all work together. Okay? We need to do it for our kids, we need to do it for our community, everybody has to help each other. I feel all I hear is people fighting with each other for their egos, for everything else. So I really, really think everybody needs to put their pride away and just start putting their two feet in front, just like I do every day, okay? Because believe me, no one wants to be in my position. And you need to, you need to start listening to us. We're here, we, we, just like you guys are here, we're here too. You think we want to be here? No. I have, I have to feed my kids, I have to get them ready for school tomorrow, we're busy. But, you know, and we're trying to help you guys push for this community. Let's do it, let's work. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Robert Stark, 704 Palmer Court, I'm on the Traffic Committee. Before I say anything, I want to make a comment about observing some of the other speakers. This is something I've just observed and I see it here now. As I'm speaking, the only two people looking at me are Mr. Natchez and Ms. Lucas. The mayor, now you're looking at me, Lou, now you're looking at me. And while the other four speakers, except for Glenn, were speaking, you gave them respect and you looked at them. When Glenn was speaking, Ms. Lucas and Mr. Natchez looked at him, now you're looking at me. But while Glenn was speaking, the two of you were looking up at the ceiling, looking down on the ground, Lou was kind of playing with his face and showing his fingers, now he's writing, now you're going back. And I find that disrespectful, disrespectful. When somebody comes to the podium, whether you agree with them or not, you owe them the respect to pay attention and listen to what they have to say. You can agree or not, that's up to you. Now you're looking at me, I find that disrespectful that you're not, that's my number one comment. I now want to discuss the, the memos that Jerry sent. There were two. One, he sent on September 30th. I'm going to read portions of it. He said, this is from Jerry, "The following is a result of my research today." Meaning he looked into it and he made a decision, and this is what he said, "Eliminate volunteer-based committees." And he listed five committees, budget, water quality, industrial, traffic, flood. I'm going to give you some, in case people don't understand what eliminate means, I'm going to give you some synonyms. Delete, remove, eradicate, destroy, kill, that's what eliminate means. Now suddenly, a week, less than a week later, he writes an email saying, "Oh, that's not what I meant, I just meant to add consultants and experts." Personally, I am very happy with that, I agree with that 100%. Adding consultants and adding experts is the way to go. It should have been done long ago, I don't know why you guys didn't, didn't do that. And now I'm going to discuss specifically the Traffic Commission. In December 2021, when the Traffic... In December 2021, when the traffic, when you guys met and appointed people to the traffic commission, I was the only holdover. I had only been there for half a year. You appointed four new guys, four new guys who are smart guys, knew nothing about traffic. And instead of appointing a liaison who had some knowledge, you appointed Lou, who knew less about traffic than, than we did. So there we were, the members and our liaison, not knowing a clue. I had asked for months for training and for support so that we could do our job. And you're going to tell me that you allowed for Shannon to meet with. I reached out to Shannon a month before you did. She met with us at a meeting for an hour. That was the extent of the training that we got. At our meeting, when we talked about various issues, we're always saying, we're not experts. There's a traffic consultant. Why wasn't the traffic consultant made a part of our committee? He, now, I want to say, but Dan, Dan probably knows more about traffic than anybody. He was a terrific guide. He, he, he gave us all the information we needed, but he's just one person. But I compliment Dan because without Dan, we would have been lost. We would have had not a clue. Thank you, Dan. Okay. Rest in training. The, the village website had a, a document called a traffic task list. For some reason, that's been gone. I, I don't know what happened to it. So the traffic commission, on its own, has created a traffic task list for you guys. It covers about 70, 80 different traffic locations throughout the village that we have been asked to deal with. And that goes back a year before us. So if you decide you don't want me to be on the traffic commission when you make this decision or remove it, I'm going to give you this on behalf of the traffic commission that we've created, that hopefully you guys can use. And I would ask you, does the village have any information about traffic issues at all? Anything in writing? So the other thing is now I want to address the memo that Jerry sent today or the other day, which is about a week after the first one. Suddenly, he has this eye-opening idea that, oh, we're not going to eliminate the, the volunteer committees. We're going to add, have the same people. We're going to add experts and consultants. Great. If he had done that from the get-go, I would have said, great, thank you. That's what we need. He didn't. And I have, have to ask a question. Why did he suddenly make a turnaround and make a 180-degree turn and suddenly say, oh, I didn't really mean that. This is what I meant.
Your time is up, Mr. Stark.
I'm very, I just need a few more minutes if you don't.
No, no, you don't have a few minutes. Your time is up.
There are some people that you have, I just need another.
Mr. Stark, your time is up.
See, there you go.
No, Mr. Stark, your time is up. You, you don't get to violate the rules as much as your friends get to violate the rules.
My friends?
Your time, your time is up. Stop, Mr. Stark. Stop, Mr. Stark.
Everybody, everybody.
Good day, Mr. Stark. Have a good evening.
This is our mayor.
Have a good evening. This is your mayor.
Our trustee.
Duly elected.
They're duly elected, too.
Yeah. They don't run a meeting. I do. Your five minutes were up. Your five minutes of fame. Next item on the order of abstract of auditive vouchers, 2A. Tonight's auditive vouchers are $841,683.05. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
No.
Nope. Okay, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Augie, call the roll.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next up is.
Uh, pest at town, please.
Sure.
And next up is manual vouchers. And tonight is $21,756.41. Most of that is water. Any questions or concerns? Could you please hold it down in the audience? Because I can hear, hear everything you're saying. I do. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Thank you. All business, the dog park that's being held. And also being held is provision of free parking permits for the American Legion Post, 90, Community Counseling Center, Emmeline Theater, L M C T V, and the Mariner Public Library.
Question about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I guess we've just moved it. Shouldn't it be back on the work session? Because we don't know what we're, it just seems like it should have stayed in the work session until we make a determination about.
Well, though we made a determination we were doing it, that they were doing some, it can go back.
I mean, we just don't, I think we're still going to have to figure out what the logistics of it are. So I don't know. Either way, it just, it should be on one or the other, I guess.
Hey, Dan, put it on a work session.
Till where?
Uh, new business. Resolution approving the following traffic committee recommendations. 1A, extending a no standing restriction on Old White Plains Road. Okay. Please silence your phone. Okay, this is Old White Plains Road East from a crosswalk at the intersection of Merrick Avenue to a .20 feet northerly therefrom. And we're rescinding that and we're adding Old White Plains Road East, same side, from a crosswalk at the intersection of Merrick Avenue to a .40 feet northerly therefrom. So it's actually adding another, another car length. Any questions or concerns? None? Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Augie?
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
The next up is rescinding a time no parking restriction on Palmer Avenue. This is rescinding on Palmer Avenue, the north side, 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, from a .215 feet east of Fenimore to a .50 feet east of Fenimore. And we're rescinding that. And that had to do with a situation that was resolved by a resident moving out. Questions or concerns?
None. None.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Next up, extending no parking restriction on Merrick Avenue. Nameless Street, Merrick Avenue, the west side, from Old White Plains Road to a .55 feet north thereof. Rescinding that and adding Merrick Avenue West from a point, from, from Old White Plains Road to a .95 feet north thereof. So this is as you're turning down on Merrick Avenue before you turn onto Old White Plains Road, we're extending the no parking as if you're coming from White Plains.
Yeah, with, with the repaving and the restriping.
Right.
The traffic committee reviewed it and felt that front of a queuing area would, would be beneficial for traffic.
Yeah, I think they're right. Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Augie, call.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Murphy?
Aye.
Uh, resolve that the following chapter, this is recent establishing a no parking restriction on Shelbourne. This is taking away one spot on Shelbourne so a person can pull out of their driveway. And we've done that, I know we've done that before on Ward Avenue. So I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augie.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Establishing a no parking restriction on River Street. River Street on the west side from an intersection with First Street to a .50 feet south thereof. Okay. Questions or concerns? These have all been dealt within the work session a couple of weeks ago. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augie?
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
The next up is item 4B. Resolution authorizing installation and funding of access control system for Village Hall at the Regatta, Harbor Island Pavilion, and Harbor Masters Office. Okay. Right now, there is a, you, you enter these buildings with a key and then you, you hit a punchpad with a code. That punchpad is hooked up via telephone line, which isn't supported anymore. They don't want to support copper wire anymore. And what we'll be going to is more of a FOB system.
That's correct.
Okay? And Augie, this will be safer for both the employees and because it will offer more security.
Residents, clients to our facilities. The pavilion has young children.
Yeah.
Block everybody else. We could give access to people and deactivate the same access remotely as well. It's great for our boards and committees that are using the Regatta or any one of these offices.
So you could see who's FOB opening the door.
Yes. Yes. You can also, you know, they could download an app. And on that app, we could pre-authorize them to have access to any door we choose.
It's easier than trying to activate or arm the, yeah.
Liaison to recreation. You send me your email. You download your app, put your email in. You already have authorization to go into that door and into this facility. I'll also know what time you went there.
Yep. And what time we locked up. And what time we locked up. Right.
Excellent.
Which is a little challenging now from the Regatta.
Oh, it's very challenging.
Yeah, I know.
We already use this at the fire department locations.
And, and the police department.
Headquarters, PD, both have these.
Great. All right. Any questions or concerns?
Um, just the same concern I voiced in the work session, that we really need to adopt a capital spending plan. We have a whole bunch of things we want to buy, but we have spent a lot of money that we hadn't anticipated in our budget. And we have to be more, more on top of this.
So at this point, when, when, when do we sit down with the capital budget? And what, what's our schedule? Because I mean, I've been hearing that since the first day I came, came on this board.
We tried to do it in September and we didn't. I'm going to tomorrow. How about if I try to circulate a bunch of dates and we start doing it? They're public meetings.
Honestly, they should wait for a new board.
Yeah, I mean.
There's, there's a month or two left in the court. They shouldn't be making decisions that go five years.
I'm not saying it's going to go five years, but I think that.
Capital budget is a five.
But I think that, that, that Lou is new to this process. There's going to be two other trustees who may or may not, who are going to be new to the board. There's no reason why these can't be televised, but I think partially having the discussion is a good idea. It's complicated, so.
Right. But two of the people who are going to have participation in the discussion are not going to be here. And we don't even know, even trustee Tefora isn't here tonight. We don't know if he's coming to another meeting. You know, so.
So, you know, I think it needs to wait for the, I mean, I mean, I think this board had its chance to do it and didn't.
Well.
But, but, but.
And I think.
When, when is it? When would we, would it be December, January? When would it happen?
We have, you want, I mean.
Well, I mean, we, we update the capital budget and plan that we present to the board as part of the tendered budget process. So, you know, that, we will have a, an updated plan sometime in, you know, February, March timeframe. But, you know, I think the, the larger question is, you know, having the board review and adopt a capital plan. So it gives the staff a direction as to what exactly, what, what are the priorities? What do we, what is, you expect us to get done in?
When we looked at it as a board, what, what happened, to my recollection, is that members got bogged down into individual projects, kind of asking for the specifics of an individual project that couldn't even be supplied because a, a capital plan doesn't deal with, you know, specific how things are going to get done. It, it, it's a guess at what cap, you know? A capital plan in any budget is a guess at what you're going to spend. It, it's not concrete. It, it, and I remember, you know, asking for information that couldn't be provided and, you know, spending hours on like five topics. And I think what the board has to do when they eventually do it is accept, you know, the, the advice of our, you know, experts and, you know, with, with input and intelligent questions, but not, not trying to, you know, pick and, you know, pull apart every request that they made. Because A, they won't have the information in detail like that. And B, we'll never get through it. I mean, it was many, many pages long.
But I think that we need to adopt a capital spending plan. And I think what's happened is when we, when we adopted the budget, we said we were going to spend X amount of money in the capital budget. And we've spent a lot of other money this year since we adopted the budget. And so, and obviously, things come up and there's a contingency. Yeah, there's a contingency lines for things that come up, but we have spent more than that. And I think that if these are the kinds of expenses that, that we're, that we were really going to need to spend, then, then we have a different conversation about what kind of a budget that we adopt.
I understand it. And I agree with you. But my point being is that we, we didn't adopt the dollar amount because we couldn't get through, you know, the, the, the meetings because of, you know, in, in my view, you know, picky and questions that didn't look at. You know, we're supposed to be looking at things from 30,000 feet. You know, that, that's, that's the point of the Board of Trustees. We're not supposed to be micromanaging and we're not supposed to be, you know, getting into that detail. That's why you hire staff.
But it's also our obligation to ensure that the budget we adopt is the budget that we spend.
I understand, but we didn't adopt that. I'm talking about why we didn't adopt.
But we adopted an, an amount that we were going to spend on capital and we've gone way over that this year. And I think we have, you know, residents who want to know how we're going to fund some parallel flood mitigation. And the reality is, we have, we can't, you know, although there's, they've thrown away, thrown out a nearly $295 million ability to bond, we can't really do that. That's not.
No one has proposed that.
No one's proposed it, but that number's been thrown around. It's not a realistic number. And I think part of what has to happen is that there needs to be real conversations about how much we spend on capital projects on a regular basis. And we keep approving them on an incremental basis and we're not thinking about the big picture.
No, we're going around the circles here.
Right.
I agree with you. I'm saying that I think it'll be easier in the future.
Yeah, it'll, and once we sit, once we sit a new board, I mean, I, I think it'll, it'll be easier. But that's, I was just asking for time. I mean, we're talking about, what, December, January?
So meanwhile, I think it'd be really beneficial for anybody who's running for office and anybody who's in office to, you know, brush up on some of the controllers courses that are offered on, on, on the budgets. I mean, or ask Augie some questions because he's really pretty skilled at this stuff.
Augie and I have been having deep conversations. So, um, yeah, okay, great. All right, that's, that's good. But I mean, the, you know, this, this, this board had its shot and I think the window's closing.
No, I, I think, Lou, that's very disingenuous.
What?
That's disingenuous.
No.
We haven't upvoted on this.
I'll make a motion.
We're, we're, we're finding.
What?
The access control system.
The access control system.
You know, I've had my hand up through this whole discussion.
What do you want?
I'd like, four. Budget committee had made two very significant recommendations to this board that had been discussed by this board, but this board has never adopted them or rejected them. One was the priorities for spending based upon categories. And the other, the other was the amount to be spent. Those are your 30,000, looking at it, has nothing to do with picky and questions. And, and until you do that, you'll never have a meaningful capital budget.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Did you vote no or yes?
Both of us?
Natchez?
Yes.
Yes.
Said yes.
Couldn't hear. A proposal to conduct an order evaluation of the village transfer station at 313 Fayette. This evaluation will allow us to have information, to have basically ammunition to then go and try and have a, a meaningful enforcement action against folks who allegedly, and I know they are, are, are causing these problems and these, what did you say here? Malodorous impacts. That SAT money was well spent.
Malodorous.
I, I just remain inspired by your proclamation.
No, I saw that and I underlined it. So this is, this is a meaningful step and a necessary step in, you know, making, documenting and making a case against people who might not be doing what they're supposed to do. Any questions or concerns? And this is called the authorization to execute professional service agreement to conduct an order evaluation study of the waste transfer station located on Fayette Avenue. And this includes us too. Dollar amount on us?
$10,000.
$10,000.
What'd you say, Dan?
Not to exceed $10,000.
Not to exceed $10,000.
Got it.
I remember, I remember. Any questions, concerns? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call the roll, Augie.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. 4D, resolution accepting, resolution authorizing the acceptance of donation for benches at Harbor Island. I have to do these separately, although they're from a given. The first one is Rosemarie and Donato Frioli are desirous of donating a bench and a plaque to the Village of Maric in Harbor Island Park in dedication to Frioli's Corner Suite memories from Dan, Row, Frioli and family. And we thank the Frioli family for their generous donation and in remembering their loved ones. And this is in the amount of $2,241. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Pardon me, call the roll, Augie.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. And thank you to the Frioli family. Whereas Ms. Evelyn Wordle is desirous of donating a bench and plaque in the Village of Maric to be placed in Harbor Island Park in loving memory of George Wordle from the Wordle family. And this is also going to cost $2,241. And I'll make the motion.
Second.
Uh, Augie, please.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye, thank you. Resolution authorizing recertification of special use permit with wireless edge. This is part of our law and agreement that this is renewed every five years. This is apart from the contract where they pay us a certain amount. And then I think Augie said this is nets us around $90,000 a year.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Approximately, and this is for the tower that is on Fayette behind the salt shed. So really isn't blocking anybody's view, and it brings us in a nice chunk of change. Good work. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Augie.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. As a resolution supporting the Clean Water, Clean Air and Green Jobs Environmental Bond Act of 2022. When you go on, when you go to vote this year, turn over the ballot. There's four propositions on the ballot. The first one is this one, it's from New York State. It is to, it, it, it is to bond money to pay for environmental projects. Also water projects, like, you know, the filtration plant that we're building, that's gonna cost in excess of 100 million. Hopefully, we can get money from them for this. This is definitely gonna, you know, help with flooding, help with sewer problems, help with portable water problems, all of which we had. So in my opinion, voting for this would benefit the people in this community a lot.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
I mean, I, I would say, and this means something coming from me, there is nothing on the ballot that's more important than this. This is, these are the kind of things we're going to have to do anyway here. And, and it will either come out of, you know, our, our own pockets, or we'll be able to find money for it. This is flood mitigation stuff. This is all the kind of things that we'll need the money for. So as far as I'm concerned, as long as I sit on this board, we're gonna do all those things, no matter how they get paid for, but this will give us a way to pay for it.
Any questions or concerns for what? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augie.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, now I'm gonna, I need a motion to add item for H4. No, no, wait up.
Yeah.
No, 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 not yet. I'll, I'm gonna skip to 4H. 4H is now gonna become 4G. Okay? Resolution approving public safety capital item retrofit lights on Maric Avenue. We talked about this at the work session. Lights on Maric Avenue are not good at illuminating, especially pedestrians in the street. If you've ever driven on Maric Avenue at night, and you get to the middle of the block and, you know, the corners, they, they did work on the corners before, and it worked out pretty well. But if somebody's coming in the middle of the block, especially if they're wearing dark clothing, you sometimes don't see them until you're pretty close to them. So this will be pointing light both at the sidewalk and then into the street to, to hopefully, you know, make that illumination and keep us safer. So that's what this is about here, retrofitting those lights. And any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augie.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. All right, now, that was just, what did I call that? That was just H. So item 4G is adding an item to the agenda. We need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
No, yes.
It's already on.
It's on the agenda.
No, no, but this is a different, this is different, because.
Just the last two resolved clauses.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, well, well, can we revise it? I mean, it's.
We, we, we're not adding three members, we're, it's just, trust me on this one, okay?
It's your, it's your decision.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
I'll, I'll make the motion, you can second it, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, since this is new, I'm gonna read the whole thing. Whereas the Village of Maric Board of Trustees and the Recreation and Parks Commission have had ongoing discussions about establishing a dog park in the village, including the 2017 engagement of a consultant to explore a construction of a dog park in either Stanley Park or Warren Avenue Park. And whereas on September 20th, on September of 2022, the Parks and Recreation Committee formed an ad hoc dog park subcommittee consisting of five members, three from the Recreation and Parks Committee and two from the general public, to work with the village staff to explore potential sites for a village dog park and report back to the Recreation and Parks Committee. Whereas in February of 2021, the ad hoc, oh my God, the ad hoc dog park subcommittee recommended a location in Harbor Island between the Maric Schoolhouse and the wastewater treatment plant along Boston Post Road, and approved the motion requesting that the Board of Trustees provide funding for a study of the villagers' consultant, colored sessions, to explore the feasibility of this location. And whereas due to extraordinary staff obligations related to the pandemic and Hurricane Ida, execution of the project was delayed. And whereas at the September 7th, 2022 meeting, the Recreation and Parks Commission, at their meeting, after review of additional information and community input, revised their recommendation to locate the dog park in an area along the Rushmore Avenue side of the park as the preferred alternative. Preferred by them. Whereas the Board of Trustees at their September 27, 2022 meeting, after hearing comments from the Park and Recreation Committee, determined that it was appropriate to provide the Recreation and Parks Committee ad hoc dog park subcommittee additional time to explore sites, and that the ad hoc committee membership be expanded to incorporate residents from the wider community. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees concurs with the Recreation and Parks Committee that its ad hoc dog park subcommittee be constituted of the following members. This committee, when it was constituted, wasn't constituted by the board. It was kind of, you know, made up by the Rec Committee, so we're, we're kind of making it official. Tina Maresco, Cindy Gullis.
FAS, it's an F.
Tina Maresca, Cindy Gasolino.
FAS, it's FAS, FAS.
Oh, it's FAS, it's G here.
I know, just a typo.
Cindy Fasolino.
Fasolino.
Sorry, Cindy. Carrie Sergio, Elizabeth Young, Marissa.
Inzuchi.
Inzuchi, Inzuchi, Eric Williams, Sharon Jacobs and Richard Clifford. And be it further resolved that upon completion of their work to further explore a site and compares their relative benefits and challenges, present their findings to the Recreation and Parks Committee. No, they shouldn't send their findings to the Recreation and Parks Committee. They should send their findings to the Board of Trustees. Their finding to the Board of Trustees as expeditiously as possible, no later than January 4th, 2023, so that the, the Board of Trustees was, will make a decision.
Okay, the only change I would make is that in the second whereas.
Second whereas?
Yeah, okay. There's in the middle, approved a motion. It was the Recreation and Parks Commission that approved the motion, not the ad hoc subcommittee, so.
With that.
Along the Boston Post Road, and the Recreation and Parks Commission approved a motion requesting that the Board of Trustees provide funding for a study by the villages' consulting engineer.
With that amendment, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augie.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I just want to point out, and I, I've said this before, and I'm gonna say it in public. I will only look at a recommendation that is demonstrably better than the one that was originally proposed. And, you know, so that is my caveat. It has to be demonstrably better. And, because I, I thought that the original one worked pretty good. So I just, before I voted, I just wanted to be on the record as saying that. And I vote aye. All right, that brings us to Communication Board, round two. Hi, Glenn.
First of all, congratulations to the mayor. I believe he got married last week or so, and we always wish him the best. As much as we go up here and fight and argue, things like that always bring joy, and I hope it brings joy to you. We do have the spook, we do have the Spooktacular coming up. Anybody with kids, anybody, you know, I'm sure that the trustees can give you the date and time. But, you know, it's just a very fun activity to celebrate Halloween. You had a little discussion about the Budget Committee, and actually, we had a very nice conversation. The Budget Committee had a very nice conversation with, with, with the mayor. And one of the suggestions was to move the capital to do the capital budget first, because a lot of the information for the operating budget isn't available right away. It's not available until February, March. And, you know, we have previously spoken, spoken to some staff, and we had positive feedback. So if, if you're actually looking at a timetable, you'd probably be doing the capital budget starting sometime in December. And then if you put the capital budget into place, you know exactly what kind of funding you need. And then you can incorporate that into the operating budget. But that's something that, you know, you check with staff, and if they're happy with it, happy, happy, joy, joy. On flood. Number one, George Latimer, we, we've seen a couple of times. And George has been great. He's basically said, you tell us what you need. So maybe one of the things the Flood Mitigation Committee can put together is a real punch list of items that we think could be done on a county level. You know, Valhalla, White Plains, Scarsdale, retention water, diverting water, whatever. And, you know, think outside the box, not here in the village, but before the water gets close to the village, what we, what can we do to slow down and, and move water away from the village? Number two. MTA and the New York State Highway Department are both part of the bathtub. I would look to reach out to both of them and see if there's anything that they can do with, with their current structures that might be able to divert or better retain water, so our village doesn't become a bathtub between the highway and the thruway. Number three, and I've said this, what, you know, at least a dozen meetings, allow any resident business, any structure that is in the flood plain to have a 15-foot exemption to be able to raid out of the flood zone. Whether they can afford it or not, whether they want to do it or not, that's up to the residents, but at least give them that option. And lastly, we have an aqueduct in the Village of Maric. We now have a village engineer. Is it possible, like they do with the duck pond, that if we know there's a, a event coming that's gonna be a rain event, that we would be able to lower the aqueduct? That way.
Aquifer.
Aquifer.
Aqueduct transport.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. The aquifer, if we're able to lower the aquifer, again, it's a bathtub. It's, it's all about time, if you can gain an extra hour or an extra two hours because, because you've managed to get water out of the aquifer before that type of event, you know, maybe it doesn't save you in Ida, but maybe it saves you in a lot of other storms and, and saves some basements. Lastly, to go back to committees. Every committee that, you know, I've been on, and most of the committees, because you mentioned this, Tom, we are given a mission statement. You know, and for the most part, we stay in. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm a numbers wonk, so I do a lot with the budget that doesn't have to do with the Budget Committee. But when I'm working with the Budget Committee, I stay within the parameters that they have set. I think most other people who work on committees will tell you, when you're a committee person, they do give you an outline of what the parameters of your, of, of your committee is. So I just wanted to make all you aware of that. Enjoy your night, have a happy Halloween.
Thank you.
And just to follow up, I was not ignoring you, I was looking at the calendar. The Spooktacular is Sunday, the 23rd, from 11 to 4.
This will be very short. Robert Stark, 704 Palmer Court, I'm on the Traffic Commission. I think everybody observed that Mr. Tippett is a really smart guy. He knows a lot. You guys could not find anybody better than him to kind of take advice, listen to him. And I'm happy to say, this time when he got up, everybody paid attention to him. Thank you.
Good evening, Tim O'Connor, Washington Street. I'm gonna remove myself from the Parks and Rec Commission Committee. So I was, just want to comment on the resolution for the order evaluation. Phenomenal, it's a step in the right direction. I came here two weeks ago. And what I'm asking this board to do is to start the precedence in planning for oil samples, for soil samples and water samples around the Shell Drake area that we spoke about two weeks ago. We had several residents here from the understanding, understanding that they have possible cancer issues. Mayor Norms mentioned it last week, two weeks ago as well. He had some information there as, as far as employees. George Latimer was here, and he actually stepped up and said if this board needed any resources to contact him. So I'm asking this board tonight, would you please start the planning stages for looking at the sampling here, especially after the flood that we took? We don't know what's in the, in the soil around the Shell Drake Plaza Avenue location. It's very, I don't want to see emotional right now for a lot of people down there, but when you're dealing with a lot of stuff that we're doing, and it's, now you're talking about cancer, that's kind of, you know, getting to the point where it's unbearable at times. But please, if you could start the ball rolling with this, this would greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Laura Body. I'm removing myself as a traffic commission and speaking as a resident. And I want to piggyback off of what Tim said, and I want to say thank you in regard to the resolution, in regard to the order evaluation. But I do have a couple of questions. What is the timeframe? How long will it last? What months will it be conducted? And when would we see the results of that information?
Be right now, Laura, I'll try and get a few.
Yeah, because my concern is a couple of things, you know. It is getting cold, you still, you still smell it in the cold, no matter which way you slice that. But, you know, of course, temperatures change time of day. It increases, it's, it's not just certain times of day. It could be in the middle of the evening, it could be 6 o'clock in the morning. You know, it could be in June, it could be in January, it could, it depends on how, what, what the site is dumping and how long it's been there and not picked up. And I also wanted to piggyback off of Mr. George Latimer offering us help. And, you know, to reiterate, I think that after a flood of this magnitude, that it would be of benefit to do air, water and soil, and just knock it out, knock it out of the park. Let's get it all done. Let's get it all done. If there is something wrong, we can fix it. If there's not, great. We just need to discover and make sure and to expel that because, you know, you have waste and dump sites, 35 feet of water going into everybody's basement, you know, over, you know, 35 years is a lot. And we know the aquifer is contaminated. We know it is, needs to be drained. You know, it, it could be a parallel mitigation plan to figure out how to remove that water and, and move it somewhere else. You know, Pure Foods and Dippies used to utilize that and keep it down. You know, it's, it's not happening.
You brought that up before.
You know, it's something that happened and it helped. You know, it, it didn't always help, but it was, it was a buffer.
Question. Would that water be, could you irrigate with that water? Could you water your lawn with that water?
I, that's where the air, soil and, and ground samples need to be, you know, because now that flow is completely different. Water changes and, you know, at one, we all have, in that, in that Washingtonville area, Strawberry Patch area, there are working wells. Working wells that are, you can see visibly, that have been buried by additions of homes, you know...
It's above a tap in their basement.
Some people have, yeah, that's, Mary Ann actually has that tap in her basement that you could, you could actually draw from the water. I mean, my house did not flood historically, that you would get trickles of groundwater that were clean, that you could boil an egg. Not today. You know? Not, not today. I'm not sure where the water is coming from. This last flood, it was, it was coming from several different areas, from the ground, from, from the sewers. It was coming from 95. I mean, you have increase in traffic flow. God knows what's underground now. It's something that needs to be studied, you know, but removing that water, maybe you could water the grass at the parks, any park, maybe in Wisconsin, but as long as it gets away from us, would be a help. Thank you.
Just, while you're talking, you talked about a timeline, and I just do want to say, the contract for this consultant is not to exceed $10,000. So it's been my experience that if you have an open-ended contract and, you know, they get paid by the hour and by the, you know, they like that.
Clearly.
And, you know, this has a termination point. So I would think it would behoove them to get it done quickly.
Understandable, but going into the colder months?
I understand.
Maybe we could hold them back and give them some sort of, here's our timeline, this is what we're looking for. We want you to study, you know...
Yep. I'm sure Dan will bring it up.
Every three months, you know, in the difference of weather.
Every project like this is going to start off with a kickoff meeting where you go over the expectations, the timeframes, everything with the consultant.
Right, because I don't want...
The deliverables.
I don't want to miss the opportunity of when it's at its worst. Thank you.
Tag team.
My name's Jimmy Abadi, Washingtonville Neighbor Association. I want to talk about the transfer station. So the odor, eliminating the odor is good. It's like lighting the incense to cover weed. You know, that's like, you know, I'm, listen, I grew up in the 70s, so, but it, you know, it really is useless because we still smell the garbage and that's just one part of it. But, you know, I worked for Suburban for several years, and the things that they dump in those dumpsters, a lot of that stuff is really bad news. It's not supposed to go in the dumpsters, but it does. And all that stuff that goes in those dumpsters that get dumped on the river in the flood zone, that stuff is, I don't know if you guys looked at the building, the bottom of the building is corroded.
Yeah.
That stuff's running out into our water. When they come out from the trucks, they rinse their trucks off right on the water. So, you know, you know, us having people that had cancer, my wife included, and everyone else, you know, we're, we're taking this very serious. You know, there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that had cancers and, you know, everybody gets cancer, but there's a lot of people.
Yeah.
And we don't know if it's a transfer station, but we definitely got to, like, rein this in and not wait too long.
Ooh, wow.
You know, we're making phone calls, too, to make sure this happens. This is not going to go away, and we're not, we're not going to let it go away. We need to find out what's going on there. The food is the smell. There's no doubt about it. And it's probably bringing a lot of rats. But the material, the, the material from the construction sites is probably even worse than any, the smell is one thing.
Especially if it's demolition.
Exactly. You know, you're talking about a lot of different stuff, and we wanted to take this really serious. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernie, Kamara 904, Ralph Avenue. I just want to clarify, my frustrations tonight are at the Army Corps of Engineers. Okay? I just, I'm, I'm afraid that we will lose the opportunity to have preventative flood mitigation. There's a lot of money out there. They want to help us. I don't want this to go on any longer. We have to take advantage of the money that's out there. We have to do things. The flood mitigation is doing its part, but I think there's, the agenda is a little too, you know, widespread. But we need to narrow it off. We need to do it, not just say it. Figure it out, get things done. If it takes them, you know, a couple of years, I know it's going to not be a, a short process. It's going to be a process of studying it, then paying for it. I just don't want any, I don't want this to be the ACE project from 2016 and it gets disrailed from some people that don't get flooded in Monnik. And I, I want this not to get held up anymore. We need the flood mitigation, whether it's the ACE project, they're doing the ACE project, and the other parallel mitigations need to get done and no problems because a third of Monnik gets flooded. The other two thirds, they're all fine with it. But I don't want to hear about the money because I've been saying it, and I don't want to be pompous, but I've been saying it, and I told you so. That's what's going to happen with the ACE. And we need to get the money from the state. I think we'll get much further along the process with the state and the county than the federal government. You just saw it tonight, and it was, it was, it was not fun to watch Bethany and her attitude and no answers, and, and I'm sure it was frustrating for you guys as much it was frustrating for me. So I just want to be able to take advantage of it and get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. As Nora pointed out, the spooktacular is coming up. Thank you, Nora, for the time and the date. It's always a fun, a fun night for the kids, fun day for the kids. Weather's turning a little colder, so you'll be putting your leaves out on the street. Please remember to clear the area around fire hydrants so that our emergency services can operate. And I wish everyone a good two weeks. We'll see you back here in 13 days. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 904.
What?